Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the London Derry Town Council meeting for December 7th, 2020 here at the London Derry High School. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, God, visible, liberty, justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing as today is Pearl Harbor Day on December 7th. Let's have some great thoughts for the greatest generation who defended this country and won that war. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'll begin with public comment. I'm going to start with the auditor's presentation this evening. I have Mendelson here tonight. Yes? Hi, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Alina Korsak. I'm a principal at Malanson. I manage the financial statement audit for the town of London Derry for the last five years. And before we get into the PowerPoint slides, I'd just like to say that the fiscal year end here in town, the general ledger was closed timely and therefore we had a smooth and we had a timely audit closed out as well. All the balance sheet accounts were fully reconciled, the key amounts on the balance sheet, number one being unassigned general fund balance, which was remained consistent to last year, only increased to 2%. And consistency is a good thing, so that went well. And even on accrual set of financial statements where there's not as much focus as on the fund financials, the unrestricted net position, the negative 35 million, only increased by 7%, which is also very comparable. And of course, it's negative due to net pension liability and net over liability being recognized there. So with those quick summaries, good theme of consistency and audit being closed out timely, we'll go into the slides and we'll start with our relationship with auditors. And of course, you guys know that we work with management to perform the financial statement audit, and they express an opinion on your financial statements, which is the responsibility of management. Now, we issue other than our opinion, which is on the basic financial statements and does not include required supplementary information like management discussion and analysis and pension and OPAP schedules, we issue a management letter as well, governance letter, and single audit report, although that one is pending because the OMB, the Office of Budget and Management, hasn't concluded on their compliance supplement for the CARES grant, which is an audit program that we have to follow. So that one hopefully will be done in the next few months, completed then. And typically, it's due in March, but with this current situation, that timing might be extended. Then we'll go through our audit process. So what we do is we perform different audit procedures to have confidence level on the amounts that are in your financial statements and then the notes to the financial statements. So we obtain audit evidence to support those amounts. While we express an opinion on the financial statements, we do not express an opinion on the town's internal control, because this is a financial statement audit. We do however, get an understanding of how the controls work in the town, and we test various cycles on a sample basis. So with that, we'll just go into a brief summary here for internal control, which is management's function. So management safeguards assets and ensures proper financial reporting. And what we as auditors do is transactional testing for internal control, for vendor disbursements, payroll disbursement, journal entries, all on a sample basis. We make sure that the controls over reconciliations like cash receivables in proper order, and then we do what we call walkthroughs. So we basically walk through controls of a treasury cycle, tax collection cycle, general ledger and closing cycle. And overall, we just evaluate policies and procedures on how they relate to financial statements. So following that, we're just going to quickly mention the rate set, the rule setting agency here, which is GASP. So GASP is the one that primal gates gap for governmental financial statements, and I'm just going to quickly mention two Gaspys that are coming up. GASP 84 is going to be effective this coming up fiscal year ending June 3021, and it refers to fiduciary funds, mostly former agency funds that are now going to be custodial funds, different presentation for those. And the bigger one is GASP 87, which is the following fiscal year where you have to evaluate your lease reporting. And with that, we'll just go to the financial statements and what comprises financial statements. So there's an auditor's report, and we gave you an unmodified opinion, which just means we didn't need any modifications to have your financial statements be in accordance with the gap. And then you have the management discussion analysis, just a brief summary how the town is doing financially. And the financial statements that you have received today, there are two sets in them. There's accrual basis starts first after management discussion analysis, and then there's fund basis, which is not on accrual basis. It's by fund and it's unmodified accrual. And then it's followed by notes and then our side, the required supplementary information. So the key numbers on the accrual financial statements would be the unrestricted net position on accrual basis, that net pension liability, net over liability, and then on fund basis, of course, general fund, unassigned fund balance, and SOR is unrestricted net position, which for the first year, you had SOR adopted as an enterprise fund. And then this slide here goes right into the general fund, you're the number one focus here. So unassigned fund balance, sorry the colors didn't come out too great on the projector, but that just shows you the consistency that the unassigned fund balance has been in the last three years, which is for rating communities is a great thing to see. They refer a lot to consistency as a strength. So they're very comparable for the last three years. So even though you used about $1.7 million of fund balance in fiscal year 20, about $1 million in fiscal year 19, about $1.6 million fiscal year 18, your positive results of budgetary operations mitigated the use of fund balance and you stayed consistent without decreasing the fund balance. So on the following slide is the percentages as of gross appropriations of general funds. So because your fund balance policy compares it to gross appropriations, these are the percentages. So again, also consistent percentages from 16.3 in 2019 to 16.8 in 2019 to 15.7 in 2020. So if you are following in your financial statements, the balance sheet for general fund is on page 16, and then the percentages are mentioned on page eight, which is your management discussion and analysis. So if you go to page eight and then 16, you can see this information, and you can see that the percentages exceed 5 to 7% recommended level per your fund balance policy. And that's discussed more in your management discussion and analysis around that page eight. And then we'll go into the budgetary results. So here's the summary. So revenues and other financing sources, that actually should be a positive variance of 731,000. Now that surplus comparing the surplus revenues to the previous year is less by about $1 million, but then unspent appropriations, which is the next line, expenditures and other financing uses come in short of budget of 680,000. That is consistent to how they were in the previous year. And this is where I mentioned that for fiscal year 20, you did use use of fund balance of about $1.7 million. And this is where you can see that even though you did use fund balance, but because you had positive results, surplus revenues, 731,000, expenditures on the budget, 680,000, overall there is very minimum effect on fund balance. It's just a slight negative 267,000. And there's some other factors that go into changing unassigned fund balance, but this is a big factor right here. And that use of fund balance was voted in your March 2019 annual town meeting. And the good news is that it's almost all for capital, so it's really not being used to offset operations. The next slide, we have debt. You see comparing fiscal year 18, 19, 20, for example, at 630, 20, that is about $14 million. And the good news here is that about 75% is all getting retired within the next 10 years. That's considered a rapid payout. So with exception of fiscal year 19 exit foray and central fire station bond issues that you did, all the rest of them are going to be retired within the next 10 years. And then we'll go into the net pension liability. Again, we see it being consistent. It's about $34 million at 630, 20, and that's the number we talked about. That's only shown on the accrual financial statements, which is less attention goes to that than your fund financial statements. So the number is consistent now. It's good to point out that the measurement date for the New Hampshire retirement system where London Derry has a share of it is as of the year before. So this is actually measured as of June 30, 2019. Now, the state does expect to lower the discount rate. That's currently at 7.25%. So that's to keep in mind how that liability should technically increase if the discount rate decreases in the future. Then the following slide is a similar slide, but it's on your OPAP liability.
Excuse me.
Oh, yes, of course.
Please repeat the part about retirement.
Oh, okay. So go back to net pension liability. So this is London Derry's share of the New Hampshire retirement system. So the liability calculated is as of the prior year measurement date. So GASP allows the liability to be what they call a one-year look back. It helps because the New Hampshire retirement system can do their part and not delay the audits of everybody else, because they can get it done ahead of time, because they are measuring it as of the year before, and that's okay. So as of 630, 19 measurement date, reported on 630, 20, London Derry's accrual set of financial statements, the liability is $34 million. That is measured at a discount rate of 7.25%. From what we hear, the state expects to lower the discount rate in the future, which means that number, the liability, would go up, because it's lowering a discount rate. It's called the change in assumptions, and whenever there's a change in assumptions, liability would go up and the difference would be amortized as a deferred outflow.
Okay, so for the council, that's on page 47 and 48. You know, we attended a presentation of the New Hampshire retirement system in which they said they were, what was it, nine billion behind or something along those lines? So this is what that gentleman was talking about there that night and about downshifting. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And then we'll go to the next slide, which is the OPAP liability. Most of it is called total OPAP liability, because it's the town liability and the town doesn't have like a reserve fiduciary fund set up for it. But there is a small part here, net OPAP liability arising from New Hampshire Retirement System Medical Subsidy. So this is actually a consolidated number. But the number was consistent to the previous year. So fiscal year 19, that liability was 12.4 million. Now that liability is slightly higher, 12.8 million. Excluding the bigger portion, which is the town, the smaller portion, which is New Hampshire Retirement System Medical Subsidy, same goes for that. The discount rate is expected to decrease, their solability is expected to increase there. And then, so in general, that just means that, reporting aside, in general, on the funding side, it's likely to expected that the future actual cash payouts have nothing to do with liability, but the actual cash payouts might increase. And then we'll go into the management letter. This is just an other recommendation. We did not note any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. This note is really just saying that the town trust funds, other than roadway maintenance, capital reserve, and the other maintenance, meaning the mostly permanent funds, some private purpose, but anything outside of those capital reserve funds, that portion is currently tracked in Excel spreadsheets, and we just recommended that, recommending that it goes as a fund in New World Systems, which is the town's general ledger software, and go through the same controls that the rest of it does. So just another recommendation to flow this through New World System, just as the other funds are going through it. And that just brings us to conclusion, and just in conclusion, I just want to say it all went, the audit went well, and we had really good communication with management, and they were really helpful in helping us finalize it all.
Thank you, Alina. If you can stay for questions. Justin, do you have any comments?
No, as she mentioned, we have the single audit that's still upcoming, but we're pending the final word on the regulations in regards to the single audit.
Questions from the Budget Committee? Questions from the council? Yes?
Wait a minute. Hi, my name's Deb Paul. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I have a few questions, because I'm the new guy on the block, and I'm trying to wrap my head around things and understand it. And as I'm reading this letter here, one, two, three, your fourth paragraph, it says giving your limitations. And when you say that, what do you mean? Given your, like, are you limited to what you can look at or what you're looking for?
So I'm assuming you're reading the auditor's opinion, pages one through three?
It's on the management letter.
Oh, on the management letter.
I'm sorry. And the paragraph starts with our consideration of internal control. And then it says weaknesses, and then it says period, given these limitations, period.
Oh, okay. So that's pretty much a disclaimer that there could be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies going on that we may not be aware of. Because as I mentioned, this is a financial statement audit, so we don't express an opinion on internal control. So this is what it's talking about, limitation inherent nature of our financial statement audit, audit procedures when concluding on the fact that the balance sheet is materially fairly stated, and we take all the numbers there and trace them to support and documentation. It's different than, for example, looking at a separate internal control audit. Sometimes they're called, you're probably familiar with SAC1 reports that the private companies do. Those are called internal control audits, and that is specifically designed to test controls, where the financial statement audit is not designed to test controls. So we just get an understanding of it and test on a sample basis. So with that inherent limitation in the financial statement audit, there could be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that could be occurring that would not come to our attention.
Okay. But you guys could do those if, I mean, for extra fees and whatever.
Yes, it would be completely separate engagement.
Okay. The other question is, so I've been listening to a lot of this, and when you look at a department's budget, they've got personnel items, and then they've got non-personnel items. And the non-personnel items sometimes aren't exactly what they are, like they haven't updated them, and then on the personnel side, they may move money over, going across and across, but at the end of the day, it's still within their budget. I would like your opinion as to what you think that type of accounting, you know what I mean? Like what you think of it? I mean, personally, I think if this is your non-personal items, paper is, it was $100, now it's 500, I think it should say 500. And if you have, you know, a person who's retired or open position, those monies should not be in there. That's how I see it, as opposed to taking that money and moving it over there to make sure that your bottom line is okay. So I just, I would love your opinion of that type of accounting.
I've been audit in for over 20 years, and that's the difference, for example, that I see in Massachusetts, where mostly the compliance is at personnel, non-personnel for every department. And then New Hampshire, where mostly the compliance is at bottom line level. So when we do an audit, we test that the bottom line is in compliance, because that's where the legal level of control is here. Now internally, there are what's called budget amendments, budget transfers, there are different could be resolutions, so other, per internal guidance and regulations, the budget amendments happen with supporting documentation to transfer between line items. And we test the net amount of supplemental appropriations to get to the bottom line, because that's basically, audit is just compliance. But internally, yeah, there's, there could be more that we wouldn't go into. Have you looked to see if there is budget amendments? A council of resolutions for these transfers?
I was just trying to understand it. I mean, I know we're a bottom line budget, but to me, good accounting is if this is, if this costs this, that's what you budget for. If somebody is here, you budget for them, but if they're not there, it shouldn't be there. It should be more accurate. So I just wanted to see what your opinion is as a professional in this field, as I'm not, and like I said, I'm very new, I'm just learning this, and I've been reading and reading and reading and reading, my head spins. I was just trying to wrap it around and basically take your opinion as to, is it better to say this costs this and not move the monies around to get to your bottom number? Or is it better to move monies around to get to your bottom number? Because at the end of the day, we're all responsible to the residents of this community as to what we're actually doing with their money. To say, yes, this amount of money pays for this department and the majority of it is personnel, when in fact, you're really paying for this, I think is kind of an illusion. And so therefore, I just was curious, there's your opinion, and that would be my last question.
Okay. I'm not involved in that detail, but I would expect that the support that's coming to you to approve that budget transfer details out why that budget adjustment, budget transfer between line items is getting made.
Part of what she's trying to address is SB2 default budgeting, which is not like town meeting budgeting. By GAAP, you would do more like town meeting budgeting. Default budgeting is a law that, in my opinion, didn't take into consideration the things that would be done by an accountant.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's more of what happens when you go to default. So you wind up with a bottom line budget. If you try to go to the taxpayers for an additional $500,000, it's not going to happen. So you continue to manage to a bottom line budget. Or at least most towns, it's not going to happen, unless you work for the school here, where they, you know, for a number of years, they approved additional appropriations.
Yeah, I would think that the directors of different-
But I think the question is, is that, you know, proper GAAP accounting would be is to put things where they belong.
Yeah, and the different, directors of different departments are accountable for whatever level they're at, so on that level.
Right. And in default accounting, we give the town manager latitude to manage to the bottom line, as long as they don't exceed it. So I think that's part of what the discussion is.
Okay.
All right. So we're in public comment, ladies and gentlemen. Does anyone else have any additional questions? Yes, sir.
Just as, as part of the audit, have we, from year to year, it sounds like this audit went fairly well. When things go well, do you spend less time on an audit? Or how does that work when there's more efficiency in the finance and you collect all these work papers and you spend less time? Does the town get charged the same amount, or how does that work?
The audit is a fixed fee. We typically do a contract for several years at a time, and it's a fixed fee with a slight increase for COLAR or every year, just a standard increase. And if it's not under contract, then we do, we send out engagement letter, which we consider a contract with a typical increase, kind of like a COLAR increase every year. We haven't been billing variable rates, because that's what all our audit clients desire this contract, so they know what the fees are and what, ahead of time, so they're not surprised with any fees. So it's unlike outsourcing, where we do bill rates, and that typically comes out, you know, higher, because we actually bill very exact for that. So our audit clients do like fixed fees and like us to be on a contract, so we don't really have much room to increase them per engagement letter. We do say that if we come across anything that is going to significantly delay our audit, we do have to talk to you about additional fees. So we expect that everything is closed out timely and all the books and records are in order before we come out to do an audit. So that's just an expectation we would have. So the fee wouldn't be going down, but per engagement letter, if we, if the audit has to be delayed over and over again, because something doesn't get done on time, then that's when we come back and renegotiate.
But that's where you'd have an additional fee, if there's, if the information's not in place?
Right. And we haven't had any additional fees for that here.
All right. And just one quick, one other point regarding internal controls. When you, when there's a change in technology, I don't know if finances or any change in technology took place, that might change the, how you can rely on the data. Has there been any change in technology and financial technology that has created a reliance on that data?
New World Systems have been around here for a while now, so there hasn't been, and the other systems that get imported through batches into New World Systems, they've been the same for a while, so there hasn't been anything like that recently.
Thank you.
We had a court ordered forensic audit in 2013. Do you see a lot of forensic audits these days, or is it usually court ordered, or there's something egregious has happened?
I haven't seen a lot of-
On the government side?
Right. I mean, we've seen a lot of things come out. You know, we had a new client last year that had a major fraud, you know, half a million dollars before we got them. But on the forensic side, we haven't personally done much of that lately. And I wouldn't know as much, because I'm leading the auditing department, so I wouldn't be involved in forensic-
It's usually a big deal, so everybody usually hears about it.
Yeah, I think if anything like that happens, you hear about it. I mean, the news about the new client we got last year, that was all over that state. So, yeah, I think it's, you can hear about it.
Is there anyone else in the room that has a question regarding the audit? Yes?
I have one more. I lied to you. I have one more. It was, it was his fault. So when you do our audits, right, do you audit the same things every year after year, and is it the same person doing it? Like, are they comfortable at it? Or is it a fresh new set of eyes every single time and maybe look at different departments or different areas in the budget? Or is always the same area with the same person? Because I think that's important. I don't know.
The people have changed. Where I remember supervising the SAD long, long time ago, and I had a completely different team back then, where it, before it came back to me, was a year with another CPA firm. And then the last five years that it's been with me, I had a new supervisor on the job this year, and the staff person has been around with me, the senior staff for three years on the SAD, and then the lower staff were also new. So there were, there were definitely fresh eyes. Myself and my senior were the same people, but the rest of the team were different people. And I would think that's pretty much fresh set of eyes, because I know we have, once in a great while, we'll get the requests from clients for fresh set of eyes, but that's usually when we do exactly the same team for many, many years. I actually have a few clients that, you know, I've done that with for over 20 years. So that's usually when they start asking about that.
And you do look at the same things year after year? Or do you look at different things?
No, the auditing standards require you to tailor an audit, so it's risk-based audit. So on the balancing side, we do have to just-
It's what-based audit? I couldn't hear you.
It's called risk-based audit, but on the balance sheet side, which is most of the audit, we support any material item on the balance sheet. So what the finance department gives us for supporting documentation, we trace every single material amount on the balance sheet, and that's the biggest part of the audit. And then there is the risk-based, tailored audit. So when we go through these walkthroughs, we make inquiries, we send inquiries to different people, and if something comes to our attention, then we readjust that audit program. The sample sizes for that are very small, because like I said, it's a financial statement audit. So the sample sizes for all those audit cycles are very small. I mean, moderate risk is sample 25, and you have, you know, 100,000 transactions. So it's, because it's a financial statement audit, it's a lot less on- So it's, because it's a financial statement audit, it's a lot less on controls, more on a financial statement. And we do tailor it every year. So every year, we revise the audit program to where, like if the amounts, if different amounts are not more material than others, we'll readjust and test those numbers instead of the others. And if the, if we test, and the samples we test, they are done by software called Teammate. It's just a random sampling software. So it's going to come up with new ones every year.
And so there are a variety of different types of audits, but the state requires us to have a financial audit, or is that what we pick, or?
Yeah, so you-
You mentioned a couple. I mean, tailored, control, financial, John mentioned forensic. So there are many different types of audits that look at different aspects of a town's budget, correct?
Correct. This is the financial statement audit that mostly focuses on your, most of the time spends on your balance sheets here. And to make sure that, you know, your assets are correct, like your receivables, your cash and payables are correct, your fund balances, what the opinion says there, these are materially fairly stated. And what's disclosed to the notes to that report, all those numbers are materially fairly stated.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Elena.
Thank you.
I don't have this item on the agenda, but I do have an understanding that there's a GIS presentation this evening?
Actually, Counselor, that's coming during the public hearing, as we go over the warrant articles.
Then I'll continue on public comment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'm sorry. If I just could mention one final thing on the audit. So just to remind the council, this year, as Elena mentioned in the presentation, we've been pretty good about replenishing the fund balance that we've been using each year with our surpluses. And this year, we finished the fiscal year with another healthy surplus. But I would remind the council that approximately a million dollars of that, we put into what's called the assigned fund balance, not the unassigned. That's found on page 16, where you can see all the different categories of fund balances. Put approximately a million dollars in there in anticipation of a potential abatement with Granite Ridge Energy. So while we would have, again, replenished, if you will, the fund balance, the lion's share of that from this last fiscal year went into that assigned fund balance. So our unassigned fund balance is less than it normally would have been.
Thank you. We are in public comment. We're going to have a public hearing about the budget. Are there any questions that are not budget-related? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Daniel Bouchard, O'Connell Drive, Londonderry. Can you hear me okay with this?
Sure.
It's not a question, John. It's some clarification I'd like to bring out. I was out plowing all weekend, and we had a big snowstorm. And when I got home, my wife was telling me how social media was attacking our Public Works Department, you know, and saying that, oh, you know, the road's bad here, the road's bad there. I just want to make a comment that our Public Works Department works their butt off, okay? This storm was not an easy storm by no means. It was heavy. It was hard to push. We had breakdowns. I'm sure the town had breakdowns. You know, when you're going down the road and you have trees across the road, our Public Works guys can't just plow through there. They have to back their truck up. Same thing when they're out there all night long. They're plowing and, you know, they have lines down. They don't want to be pulling those lines down. It's a long, long hours out there, and they work very hard. And for people to get on, I'm not a social media person, all right? I have something to say. I come and tell you, all right? And I think our Public Works guys do an awesome job, all right? Those are the guys out there driving their trucks and out there plowing and trying to keep the roads clear. The snow is coming down very heavy, very fast. We couldn't keep up with it, and I know the town couldn't keep up with it. So I just want to make a comment that our Public Works guys work hard. Please don't bash them, you know? They do their best they can.
We agree with you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bill Hart. I'm the police chief. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to let the council know of a project that we're working on and wanted to get really a sense of the council as we begin. Perhaps two weeks ago, we had someone come in from a company regarding what's called body worn cameras or in-camera video. You may have read about it quite a bit over the last summer. It's really becoming across the country an industry standard, and so we're beginning to look at it here. Indeed, the LEACT group put together a recommendation that recommended that state law enforcement agencies be mandated to have body worn cameras. And this year, legislation has been filed to make sure that everybody has body worn cameras. For many years, I felt like, from the cost benefit analysis, it wasn't an appropriate expenditure for the town, given the relatively low incidence of complaints that we have versus the high number of officer hours. I'm going to take my glasses off. The high number of officer hours that we have. So in my judgment, at that time, it didn't seem to be an appropriate expenditure. Things are changing in the law enforcement community. And I wanted to get a sense of the council as to what your thoughts might be going forward. Is this something that we would consider this year? And I know this challenges this year, and that's why I'm here to ask, to potentially put on the warrant and ask the citizens for their guidance and help, of course, financially with regard to this. So I put it to the council, and if you want us to put something together, or if you want to offer comment now.
Well, two quick questions. You said legislation being filed, they're going to mandate something. Of course, they're not going to fund it.
I only saw the LSR, so I, I can imagine they won't-
Oh, just making sure we all understand that. Two is, is do you have a cost, Chief, of what this is?
Well, when we originally looked at it a couple of weeks ago, as I say, we took every single officer in the department and considering that that would be an outfitted cost. And it's typically those costs are spread over about five years, no matter who the vendor is. There are three main vendors available: body worn, Axon, which is really the Taser company, and WatchGuard Video. And they tend to run at that number, 67, everybody outfitted, chief to newest person in the door, about $650,000. We don't think that's necessary in Londonderry. We think that we might be able to really focus it on patrol officers and detectives and perhaps some others who have specialized duties. So I would, I would, this is a guess. I'm thinking around $400, $450,000. It's not an upfront cost. It would be amortized over the five-year period.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Yes, Joe?
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you looking back into it. I know, probably remember three or four years ago, I brought it up and I was kind of, I liked it, and it really had nothing to do with, because of the offices that we had. I really wanted to protect the offices we had, really. I thought about it in a, a different way than maybe other people do. It's like, well, you know, when they, they do stop somebody or they do encounter some situation, that would help them in case anything was ever, you know, accused. So I think it's a great idea, and I'd love us to take a look at it. And I think your, your position about putting it on the warrant as a separate line item and let the, let the town of Londonderry decide, I think is also a good idea, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Jonathan?
Chief, just curious about any ancillary costs associated with this. Let me start by saying I'm fully in favor of the use of the cameras. I'm thinking of things, though, like policy development, training, and probably most importantly, data storage, because the cameras create a whole lot of data.
Right. We've looked at, with some degree of depth, only one provider so far, and that was a total cost, not including training, but definitely including outfitting and storage. So I wanted to really kind of get a sense of the political leadership of the community before we kind of invested the time in talking to the Axon people or the WatchGuard Video people. My understanding is that those costs typically in total are about the same for each one. They each offer different sort of peculiarities that make their particular product more valuable in their eyes at least. So I think it would require some study. We're pretty much ready to go and take a look at it, though. The training issue, there could be costs associated with that, but at least as I understand it from the presentation that was given to us, that would be part of an on-duty situation where the person's already on duty, getting used to the product. The company that we did talk to, that's part of their cost, that whole piece. In other words, bringing their people in, outfitting uniforms, all that stuff, that's one cost fits all.
Just one question. Would we be the first in New Hampshire to do it?
No.
As a town?
No.
Who else is doing it? And, you know, what were the costs associated?
I, I don't know what the costs for the other communities were, but there's, there's quite a number of communities that do it.
I'm just thinking that might be good to get that information, so you can ferret out all the bugs that are stumbling stones that, you know, looking into something new, we could find and hopefully avert them by knowing what they were in advance.
Totally agree with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Sorry, him first.
Will the, Chief, will the entire force have that? Or like, I guess what I mean by the airport, would they need it too?
That's a question up for sort of some consideration. I, I don't even want to hint at an answer because I, I haven't really thought it through intellectually.
Okay.
And gotten Captain Gandia's input on that and the airport. So I think we'd have to make some judgments after we have some information. It may be that no, and that would reduce the overall cost. It may be yes, however. And the reason why is because we rotate officers in and out of the airport. We don't, we don't operate like the sheriff's office used to. We are assigned to the airport, and that's where you go. Typically, people rotate in and out.
All right. And on a lighter side, you think we can have our own TV show?
Well, you never know.
I hear a burning generator. Yes, Jim?
Bill, I've gone back and forth on this, and I've asked-
So have I, as you know.
Boots on the ground. I know. It's a big expense. How many actual cases have we had with police mismanagement or use of force?
Well, I've been advised by my attorney not to reference police mismanagement.
All right, okay.
No, the, the fact is, that's why I've been sort of hesitant to go into it, because the police misconduct ratio here is very low. We average 15 to 20 actual complaints, soup to nuts. People walking in, and I don't appreciate the way somebody spoke to me, to the most egregious type of complaint. And of those, less than one a year on average is sustained. So you, you have a very good police force here. The concern I have is that this is an idea that's coming. So my thought is we should perhaps get out, get ahead of the curve. It's never going to be cheaper than it is today, as always. Those are my thoughts.
Chief, thank you for coming in and giving that presentation. Please correct me. I believe I heard you say that it is, it'll be a state mandate, or it could be a state mandate, or it's looking that way. Do you mean state, like state law enforcement, or state all law enforcement, including municipalities within the state?
Well, the, the LEACT Commission, which was that commission that was formed by Governor Sununu to take a look at some of the concerns in law enforcement following the George Floyd incident, they made a bunch of recommendations. Among those recommendations, which the governor's indicated that he will sign, is that state law enforcement officers, meaning state troopers and some others, will have body worn cameras within a certain timeframe. And we're not looking at that far out, a year, perhaps two. This year, legislation in the form of an LSR has been filed saying that it should be statewide for municipalities, county agencies, and that sort of thing. I think the chairman raises a good point. It has the potential to be an unfunded mandate unless there's grant support for it or some state support for it. So I think it's an idea that's coming. It's an idea that the costs of storage are beginning to go down. They are substantial anyway, but I, my thought is, let's explore it. Let's get out of the, get in front of the curb on this thing. Take a hard look.
Thank you. Other than officer misconduct or report aid, are there other benefits that were law, like for law enforcement officers, for them? Like, I don't know, officer down or something like that? Like, what are the other benefits?
Well, there's, there's actually a lot of them. One of them, interestingly enough, you referenced the officer down issue. One of the cameras is GPS-locatable, so that in a situation where an officer was down and we didn't know the location of that officer, that GPS would be able to find that officer immediately. And that would have obviously great benefit. There, as with any new or emerging technology, it's not new, but it is emerging, there's going to be upsides and downsides. I could see some real upsides in prosecution of criminal cases, particularly traffic cases, some kinds of assault cases. You have contemporary evidence that's being developed from that body worn camera or BWC. There are going to be challenges too, in terms of how do we use it effectively to assure justice and privacy for people who are entitled to privacy under the law. So I think, you know, we'll get, we'll have to learn how to use it, as with any new technology.
Now, I, I know this is more of a, my, you know, in the, in the details thing, and I'll be quick. With the, I, please help me, or I'm not familiar with if they're, they're constantly on during the whole shift from start to finish, or if they turn it on during an incident. Is there, is it an option?
Typically, they're, they're, they're set up to turn on and off by a programmable event. For an example, the person that we spoke to about one particular product, you could program it to turn on as the officer left his or her vehicle. They also have a concomitant dash cam unit, so you get those two views. So this particular product that we took a look at some weeks ago was very programmable in terms of just the kinds of things you were speaking about.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I'll let Doug go ahead now. Chief, you can step back. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Thomas, 143 Mammoth Road. I just had a, just a comment. The chief mentioned the LSR, which I just, you know, researched. It's LSR 49. And my only statement is, let's be sure, this will go through a different committee than the one I'm on, but we're very sensitive to what could be potential unfunded mandates. I personally agree, body cameras are a good idea, but that's irrelevant in terms of whether this is an unfunded mandate. So if I could ask anyone here to just let us state legislators, give us some, you know, feedback, how the town addresses this particular LSR, which will soon become a bill, so we can, you know, discuss this more intelligently. But I want to make sure that we don't have any unintentional unfunded mandates out of this, and I think we'll, we'll have a lot of discussion on that. The idea itself, though, is, is a good idea, so I'm all for that one.
Jim? Yes?
Yeah, because I think, just as you saw this, the chief came up, and I'd made a statement, and then three or four people started talking about the fact, whether it was a negative thing again. And so I think that, that proves that we need somebody like you to go over there and say, look, this is not about, you know, police not acting properly, you know, at least in my opinion. It's about another way to protect police officers also, so that the facts can be seen of what actually happened. Because if we have a police department the way we have a police department, and it's running correctly, and people are following the right things, and, and, and police officers really care about the protection of their citizens, like the Londonderry Police Departments do, things that we hear on the news won't happen. And so this is an example of how the state legislature- And so this is an example of how a state legislature like yourself could really define the purpose of it. Because I think some people are going to do exactly what we just did up here. "Oh, you know, it's about, you know, making sure the police are doing the right thing." No, it's not. It's not, it's not what we're trying to say. And so I guess you could look at it both ways, but I think we should move past that part, especially in Londonderry. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask Doug a question?
Sure.
Hey, Doug? It's the pain. Just this whole thing made me start thinking that it would be really nice if we could get our state reps here, maybe monthly, to present to the council what's going on up in Concord on all different aspects and all different bills, so that we know what's going on. I know you guys, you know, you have your Reggie and your technology and, you know, the utilities and things like that, and any bills that are being put in play that may or may not affect the community. I think that the council and the citizens of this town could benefit from our state reps and, you know, coming, you know, every month and saying, "There is six bills up there," or "There are no bills," or "We could use letters in support of this bill," or whatever. I just think that that would be something that maybe you could talk to the reps about if they'd be willing to do, and maybe it's a few of you guys or just one person representing all of you, or...
Well, you do have two of us here almost monthly, so between the two of us, we could probably give a summary, but certainly the others in our conversations, we can ask if there's anything that they would like to have us present. I do have something I would want to say, not for tonight, it's too technical, but it is something brewing on the scientific side, so that could affect people's electric bills. But anyway, you know, things like that, well, we'll bring up from time to time, and I'll certainly mention it to the other ones as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one for Chief.
For the chief?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Bill? What's the consensus with the boots on the ground? How do they view this? I know in the beginning, when body cameras came out, you know, there was a defensive posture about, you know, "What are we doing? I don't care." It's about protection, like Joe said. You know, we're talking about a lot of money here. I've heard that you've only spoke to one vendor, there's three. What are the boots on the ground? Do they, because to me, it's a protection type issue.
I think there are clearly elements of that.
So the question is, do we do more work, or do we go ahead and put it on a warrant article?
Why don't I invite the three captains up here and let them each a pine?
Awesome. Thank you.
You know, that ivory tower stuff, you know.
Yeah, I get it, Bill.
While they come up, if I could just echo what Counselor Green said a few moments ago, as I had the opportunity to sit in on the presentation that was done a couple of weeks ago, I was very impressed with the product. And as Counselor Green said, this isn't, it's not even primarily about trying to quote-unquote "catch bad behavior of cops" by having these body cameras. It's a lot for their protection and their own safety, especially when they're in very dangerous situations. And you may find this hard to believe, but sometimes the bad guys lie about how they were treated during an incident. And so it's a way to have it on record, so it's not just word-for-word, if you will.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Patrick Chidam. I'm a police officer, captain here in Londonderry, and I've been doing some research on body-worn cameras. And while we haven't conducted an internal poll officially of our staff, I have been asking many of my friends from around the state, from other police departments. And with like any new policy or procedure or technology, there comes maybe some fear, some apprehension. But I can tell you, I've spoken firsthand to half a dozen officers who were cleared within 48 hours of suspected wrongdoing or accusatorial wrongdoing because they had a body-worn camera. By no means is it a panacea to, for police misconduct, but it is something else we can do to protect our community, to protect our officers. And we are investigating and asking other people and other agencies in our area, City of Manchester, Hollis, Nashua, Concord, Goffstown, areas that are, some cities are larger than we are and some that are smaller. And once those, once the body-worn cameras were put in place, by and large, there was quite a bit of buy-in from those employees. Not across the board, fair enough, but at least that's what our initial research is suggesting.
So, again, this is still new for us. It's only a couple of weeks since we had the presentation, and the few officers I have spoken to about it had indicated to me personally that they'd be okay with it. Personally, myself, I think it's about time. Nobody wants to be accused of something that they did or did not do, right? So I think the camera, even though we haven't done it here in Londonderry or a trial, I think with time, I think the officers would be on board. I haven't heard anybody negatively speak about them at this point, from our agency and outside as well. But much like Patrick said, I think it's a very useful tool in modern policing.
Captain, please state your name for the record.
Sorry about that. Kim Bernard.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Gandio, Londonderry Police Department, the Airport Division Commander. So I've talked to a bunch of different officers about this technology, and as the chief had mentioned, as you recognize, there's a lot of other benefits to having these cameras other than just documenting the transactions that go on with our public. I think that you'll get to see a lot of the officer's safety issues, particularly if we're responding to calls by ourselves, or we have a conservation ranger who is out in the woods quite frequently by himself. So being able to track and be able to monitor where people are real-time is, I think, of a paramount importance. So I think the officers understand that this is a very versatile tool to, you know, kind of hit home on officer's safety issues. I think that, I think that the newer officers are probably a little bit more comfortable with the technology, just because I think that they've grown up with the technology. I think that some of the more senior officers are probably a little bit more hesitant, just because they don't, are not as familiar with the technology and getting to, you know, being able to use it properly. But a lot of the technology that we've looked at here kind of makes it foolproof. So I think across the board, and I think because of our administration and the history of our culture of our police department, that there's a lot of trust within our agency. So I think that the intention of using these cameras properly, under good protocol and procedure, are things that our officers, in overwhelming majority, are very comfortable with. So I think that the only reluctance that you may find is, again, like I said, some of the older officers who are not as used to technology as some of the younger officers are. But I'm all for it. I think that there's a lot of really good advantages to it tactically, daily, and most important, officer's safety-wise, so, but great questions. I'm glad we had an opportunity to kind of present on it, so.
I just wanted, as you were saying this, I was thinking, it could be a tool in your training, when you have a seasoned officer responding to something, to be able to show them these tapes of how senior, other offices, senior officers showing the younger rookies how you would like them to do this, and what are good, what are good things to do, what are things you shouldn't do. Like, it could be a really good training tool that you could guys could use.
It does. It captures a lot of video and, you know, the incident itself that we can kind of go back and digest on. We actually use a lot of these videos from other agencies to do trainings, roll call trainings, use-of-force trainings. So, you know, being able to actually have it in-house could be definitely a viable training tool, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, anyone further on public comment? Seeing that, I'm going to move to the public hearing. I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing. Hold those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Public hearing is now open. Start off with Resolution 2020-19, a resolution relative to the acceptance of unanticipated revenue under RSA 31:95B. Mr. Campo.
Yes, this is a grant that we'll be receiving from the New Hampshire Department of Safety, Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for $12,525.25. It's for the purpose of updating the town of Londonderry's local mitigation plan. There is a match requirement of $4,166.75, and if the project should exceed $16,667, the town would be responsible for the difference.
Are there any questions? Are any questions from the public? Seeing that, I will accept a motion to accept Resolution 2020-19.
Second.
Hold those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Okay, a couple of housekeeping things here real quick. We're going to move to the budget hearing and workshop. I'm going to open by letting, having, the budget committee has three members not here this evening. Mr. Sklarik, well, Kirsten and Christine. There's a statement you'd like to read and bring them into the meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. So in accordance to 91A, we have three members that are remote. As the chair had stated, we have Christine Patton, Paul Sklarik, and Kirsten Hilden. And I'm going to start off with Kirsten, like I said, in compliance with the council. She's going to make a brief statement. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Kirsten Hilden in the Homeland Committee. I am participating remotely today because we had a COVID-19 exposure in our household, so we are quarantining to make sure that we haven't been exposed and wouldn't spread out to others.
Thank you. And also, just so the public is aware, that the members will also be on speakerphone, and if they have any, would like to participate, I'll just notify the chair that they would like to talk so the public can hear them and the rest of the council. Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Christine Patton. Due to the health concerns, I am also calling in from the home.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul, you're up.
Hi, Counselor, this is Paul Sklarik. Due to COVID concerns within my family, I will not be in attendance today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Chair, Justin has a few items. He handed out to the committee. I'm going to have him go over what he handed out before we get into the different warrant articles.
Absolutely. The first sheet you will see is the tax rate calculations. As we discussed previously, the operating budget has been adjusted for personnel and health insurance. We will use December 1st as a cutoff date, so going forward, personnel and health insurance changes will not be showing up on here. The next item was the Penachuck water cost. At the last meeting, we requested that I look into what it would cost the town. Upon reviewing the letter, the letter states that there will be a 21.05% increase, where they're going to be requesting a 21.05% increase. However, when looking at their average bill increase, it looks closer to 22.84%. So if you look at the top portion, you'll see what both of those look, both of those numbers look like, and then the mean or the average of those two is the bottom one. I used the fiscal year 2020 actuals to come up with this number. You'll see the FY '20 all the way to the left, that is both hydrants and the additional water that we pay from Penachuck. This is just Penachuck.
Okay.
Are there any questions on that?
So, like I said, it's, I guess they're living on a different planet. Could, I would like to ask the council for consensus to consult with our legal representation to see what kind of legal remedy or aggressive legal action we can take, or what we can or cannot do with regards to challenging this. Yes, no?
That's fine.
Yes? Yes, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, one question for the Finance Director first. I just wanted to know, is this, does this include school water costs, or do they pay their own?
They pay their own. This is just town buildings and the hydrants.
Thank you.
Then let's ask our legal representation to reach out to the legal representation for the school and see if they'll join us.
John?
Yes.
Just ask one more question to Jason.
Sure, of course.
Justin, how many hydrants do we have in town? That this is calculating hydrants, correct?
This is the, this year, 2016, the bills that we have paid for hydrants to Penachuck. As for the actual number of hydrants?
Yeah, we have that number.
Two hundred and one.
It's also for the water usage of town water usage.
But I just kind of wanted to know how much of it, like, is there, in the bill, do they break it out, like?
There's, it's a separate bill.
I'm sorry?
It's a separate bill.
It's a separate bill. So what there's, so what Penachuck's going to say is, is they're going to say there's a certain amount of pressure they have to keep inside the system to supply the hydrants so that they can work when it comes time for them to be activated. And they're going to make the argument to the PUC that they need to build infrastructure and to do this. This is why they raise their rates, so they can build infrastructure. What I'm saying is, is that's part of your doing business, and I want to see what kind of legal challenges we may have to an increase of over 20%.
So can, while we're doing this, can we find out how much it is for the hydrants, how much it is for the water?
So, Deb?
And the pressure thing?
Deb, if you look at this sheet?
Yeah.
All the way to the left on the bottom, that is the total for Penachuck.
I'm sorry?
If you look at the Penachuck water cost sheet?
So on the bottom, it says?
So the bottom section where it says FY '20, 408,000?
Okay, so that's the hydrant, okay.
Nope, 408 is all of them. The middle number, 354,000, is the hydrants, and the one on the right is everything else.
And to John's point about the pressure, do we know how many pumping stations? Like, it's good to have the details, so when you do go talk to the lawyer.
So do you remember the whole conversation about the water tower up for Woodmont and all of that?
Yeah, kinda.
That's where all that plays in.
Okay.
So that's, but we, and we have all that information.
Okay. It's just good to know.
No, I agree. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Justin, do you know, I understand this is just for town, but do you know if residential prices are increasing as well? If you don't, you don't, that's fine.
I do not at this time.
Thank you.
My guess is because their letter states average monthly residential bill as well, it does include residential.
Thank you.
But I cannot guarantee that. I'm just going based on what I've read.
Right.
So please work with the town manager, contact our legal counsel, and engage our legal counsel to find out what our rights are and how we can proceed and what actions we can and cannot take with regards to the PUC, and what actions we need to take with the PUC.
Okay.
Anything else? This is a public comment. Yes, yes, sir. Would you like to come up and speak on this, sir?
I would like to know, is Penachuck buying a quantity of water from Manchester Waterworks to supply water to the town? And if so, they're negotiating that. I would suggest that we need to look into the town negotiating to purchase a particular quantity of water for the town, both for fire protection and for drinking water, or any other purpose. I think other towns do that. For instance, the water line that goes down from Manchester Water to Salem, potentially Wyndham, and the other southern towns south of here, all put in for a certain quantity of water, which is, basically, they negotiated to purchase a certain quantity of water to cover their needs. We have all that water running through the town of Londonderry. A lot of it is being stored in the town of Londonderry to provide sufficient quantity and fire protection pressure to these other towns south of here. I think we need to look into... I think we need to look into that, particularly if Penachuk is saying, oh, we need this additional monies because, because of perhaps what are their costs? This, this water that we're storing in the town of Londonderry, I think it's around 3 million gallons, should be sufficient water to supply the town of Londonderry and also fire protection. We've got a problem on Mammoth Road, which I brought up, but nobody seems to think it's of concern. The water protection to the schools, to the Fire Department, and all the municipal facilities comes from Manchester Water down Mammoth Road to a restricted point. That water also goes down Pillsbury Road and feeds Woodmont Common. They need fire protection. That water can't come from Dairy because they can't provide the high pressure up Gilchrist. We need to look at this seriously. A 22% increase is out of the question. We need to do our homework. Thank you.
Okay, so, next item, Mr. Campo.
So, before we move on to the next one, I just wanna let the public know that didn't get it that based on fiscal year '20, we're looking at about an $89,700 increase.
Okay.
That currently is unbudgeted for. I'm not sure if we wanna take any steps on that action, but I just wanted to let everyone know that that is the number.
I appreciate that. Let's talk to our legal counsel, find out what, what path we may or may not have before we make a decision on whether or not we're going, or whether or not, or how we're going to proceed with this item and see what standing we may or may not have. Okay, next item, please.
So, the next two items are the Assessing Department and the Insurance Department. I'm gonna request that you throw away your old papers, as these are the most up-to-date. You'll see at the bottom, it says 12/7/20. This includes the updated positions as well as any updated insurance that we've received during that time. As I mentioned earlier, we'll be using December 1st as a cutoff, so any changes going forward will not take effect in the budget.
Any questions from the Council? Any questions from the Budget Committee? I'll go to the public at the end. I wanna get into warrants.
Yes, and this is the perfect wee way into that. This is a draft of the warrants as of today.
So, are these, I know there's some warrants out there that are in, that are still in discussion that have not been brought forth.
That's correct.
Okay, so let's talk about what we have in front of us in writing first.
Okay.
And then, let's talk about the ones that are still in discussion. I see that you have Expendable Maintenance Trust and GIS on here. Do you wanna proceed with presentations?
That sounds good. We'll start with, in order, Expendable Maintenance Trust. If I could ask Steve to come up. I believe you have handouts in front of you, and Kirby's also gonna put it up on the screen as well. I've asked Steve and Amy tonight to do brief presentations on these two warrant articles, Expendable Maintenance Trust as well as GIS, since there are two items that failed on the ballot last year. And certainly, we'll be doing more public education this year on these two items so everyone understands exactly what these two warrant articles pay for. Steve, and the floor is yours.
Okay, good evening, Steve Cotton, Town of Londonderry. The Expendable Maintenance Trust in 2003 was created with the purpose of repairing and maintaining town facilities. Back in 2003, they approved $137,500 to kick that fund off, that capital reserve. What we're looking for in this budget season is a total of $180,000 to go into our fund. Next slide. Some of the key items that the Expendable Maintenance takes care of is some of our major heating and cooling systems. I won't read them all, but the key maintenance building, make mechanicals that we have. Another thing that we have picked up is the parking lots, the winter parking lots, including the Town Hall, Police Department, Library, Access Center, Central Fire, and Senior Center. Next slide. Of the buildings in town, we have 15 buildings that fall under the Expendable Maintenance Trust, starting, I put here, the year they were built. And I pulled the numbers from our Primex insured for the building value. I would like to say on the Central Fire, that hasn't been reevaluated yet, so that 1.3 number is definitely way low. As you all know, the bond was for 6.4. So, you get your fire stations, everything up the 120 High Range, the DPW, the ban stand, the Access Center, Library, Lions Hall, Police Department. Then, out on West Road, the maintenance building that we built for Sid and Art, the Senior Center, then Town Hall. So, all those numbers add up to about 21 million. And if you update Central Fire, I would probably add another 6 million. So, you're up to almost $28 million worth of assets, of buildings that we're trying to keep maintained within this town. Next slide. So, next I did a 10-year window of what we've been expending since 2010. And then, on the right-hand side, I put in the significant dollar amounts that went to key programs. If you went and added up all those, no, they're not gonna, they're not gonna sum. I just was hitting the highlights of what was driving those numbers for each of the fiscal year listed above. Next slide. So, the bottom line is, of 10 years, we have expensed 1.8 million maintaining our buildings. What did we, what are the key items that we did in that building? Next slide. If you recall, we had to replace the shingles on the Leach Library. That was 42K. The next project was the Senior Center. The front of the building, we had done, we did the update to the building. We had to repair the front porch. That was a safety issue. We had step issues on the left-hand side. So, now that total building on the exterior is totally maintained now with material that very low maintenance, whether it's vinyl or PVC. So, that project is completed. Next slide. Then, we had the ban stand. We took that in two steps. The first step back in 2010, we spent 20K. The roof had rotted. We had some other, we had no railings on the back. There was a loading dock, which was a safety hazard. That was the first round at the ban stand. And then, on 2016, went back for 19K to do, again, add materials that were low maintenance, vinyl siding. We had a significant amount of concrete and mortar repairs. Total paint of the whole building and some mechanical door we replaced for safety and security. The next project, even though this is a town building, we do lease this building out to the Lions Hall, there are some things that they cannot handle in their budget. So, in 2010, we had to do a complete roof project on that building. It was $26,000. There was a considerable amount of rot in the sub roofing on the north side, so that all will be ripped out and plywood installed. So, that was for 26K. The next, excuse me, the next one is the Town Hall. We started the partial trim repair, again, when that building was built in 2006. It was decided to use finger joint pine. And now, we're paying the price to go back and do that right and either using PVC or doing it in wrap, which will, again, very low maintenance and reliable. The next project was in 2013. The Police Department's major AC unit went. That was $75,000. And the next item last year in 2019, the Server Room, had to do an AC unit, mini-split for 11.5. Then, on to the Library, 2012. Library has four HVAC units, rooftops over there. The first, the large main unit was 32.5. They had a smaller unit that does the cholens area, that was 17.5. There are two other units that eventually, they're at the same age, 1996. So, those could be a potential issue down the road. The next item, this is our fuel farm that's located behind Central Fire. It feeds all the fuel for the Fire, Police, Town Hall, Recreation, DPW for gasoline only, and then, the School District on their, their buildings, which we, their vehicles, which we do get reimbursed. So, we've done two updates on that facility. One, we did the initial structure to make the vinyl siding, put the rails on, put the steps in so you can get in there securely, safely, and then, lighting interior. And then, we added a lean-to on the side, so they had a little extra storage for their emergency storage unit. Things that I know about right now is coming down the road. Well, the first thing is, I'll just go over the current balance of Expendable Maintenance Trust is $163,000, which is a 12.4. That number still exists. The shingles on the Access Center roof, we're gonna have to do a roof replacement on the Access Center sooner than later. As I stated before, Leach Library, there's Unit Number Three, and then, there's a unit for the Historical Room. We have several trim issues, Library, North, South Fire, Town Hall, that we need to start getting addressed. Over at PD, they're looking for interior, interior painting and repairs. Also, the courtyard walkway, the Town Hall, we've got some cracking concrete. So, we're gonna, before we have somebody trip and fall, that is something that's gonna have to get addressed with probably similar product right there, as we've already done. And of course, there's the unknowns. For instance, the Town Hall was built in 2005. So, we've got 13 HVAC units that are 15 years old. They're gonna go. So, there's other things that I can't predict, but we've got boilers of the same, same age. Well, at the Police Department, 2004, they got boilers. So, as these units get older and older, they're gonna start failing. And that's why we're just trying to keep this, this fund going and keep it balanced so that we can handle some of these significant changes and repairs that we're gonna need. Open it up to questions?
Yes, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I've mentioned before, I don't, I don't believe that the voters consciously made a decision to no longer maintain the town's facilities. I think there was, there was some emotion and there was, there was some campaigning that was done about voting no on everything, and it got, it got caught up in that emotion last year. If, in the old town meeting format, the entire voting public would have heard that presentation that Steve just gave, and I guarantee that people would not vote, wouldn't be voting against it, given what Steve just said. But in our current form of government, they don't get to hear that presentation. And they, they walk into a voting booth and they read two sentences and they have to make the decision without the presentation. I think that it doesn't make sense to me if someone moves to Londonderry and buys a $400,000 home, that after the closing, they go back to their new home and they sit in the kitchen and they, the couple look at each other and say, oh, by the way, let's agree, we're not gonna maintain this home. That would be, that would be unheard of. But that's what, basically what we did last spring when we talked about the 28 or so million dollars worth of facilities that the town taxpayers own and deciding not to maintain them. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a recommendation that we, I know we haven't gone through the warrants yet, but that we add a lot more words to the warrant. I know it's subject to Department of Revenue review, but I would wanna say something like this, that this fund is used to maintain $28 million of the town's facilities. Otherwise, these facilities can no longer be maintained and will deteriorate. I think that wording should be in the warrant article or something like that.
Okay. Any other questions for Steve?
I just wanna, I have a couple of questions and I just wanna say something to Tom.
Sure, of course.
Tom, I don't think it's a good idea to use a scare tactic to the people of this town. I think if something's a good deal and they feel it's a good deal, they're smart enough and intelligent enough to know what they wanna do with their money. That's just my feeling. I don't like scare tactics. I have been in sales for a long time in my life, and it's just something I am strongly against. It's just selling without integrity. So, that's my two cents there. Steve, every year, you spend so much money on the buildings, right? We have a Maintenance Trust Fund for that. And do you use, not except for this year, but in the past, do you use every single dime of it? Or are there monies left over that roll forward? Or does it go into the unexpended fund balance?
No, it's, it's, it keeps rolling. It's not a, it doesn't go into the fund.
So, it stays into your account?
Stays in and keeps, yes.
So, right now, you have 163,000 in there?
That's correct.
And you believe that those items in the back, if they should happen, without getting quotes from three people, in your mind, you believe that the 163,000 would not cover the items you have in the back? You believe it's short 180,000, is that what you're saying? So, you're saying that to do those little repairs in the back, it would cost almost $300,000? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm just trying to understand the maths here.
No, I understand, I understand. I just wanna clarify, expendable, when we put something in the Expendable Maintenance Trust, it can only be used for that purpose.
I understand.
No, I just wanna make sure. It can't leave that fund, it can't go anyplace else.
I understand, I think.
No convertible for Steve, you know?
No, well, for me, I looked at like, for example, that 55,000 for the steps, I thought was extremely high, extremely high.
I, I understand, but you know?
And so, I, I look at this and I saw the roof for 30-something thousand dollars or 60,000. And I'm like, some of these things seem extremely high to me.
So, let's, let's do a little math, okay? We have how many HVAC units at Town Hall?
13.
What do they cost per unit on average?
To replace them today, they're probably between 30 and 35,000 a pop.
Each?
Each.
Okay, and I just wanna do a little math here.
No, I understand.
All right, so if we, if we put them on a schedule, let's say we know, let's say we know the age of these is 18 years, and we put them on a schedule to replace them over the next seven years, we'd be looking at something like $350,000 in, 350, 450 in total. So, $450,000, so it was good to do a little math, right? Okay, so, and the unit at the library costs how much?
I would say that, that particular one be right around 37, like, like, like Number Two was.
Okay, so 37K. The Historic Room's gonna be probably at least 10, because that's gotta be a specialized unit, right?
It's, it's a small unit, and yeah, you're 10, 15,000.
Okay. Access Center roof repair, it's not that big a building, 5 to 10?
No, no, no. You're more than 40,000.
What?
Access Center?
Yes.
The Access Center, we're talking about the Cable Access Center.
Cable Access is probably somewhere between 25 and 35,000.
Okay, let's just put these numbers down.
I'd like you to explain why you think that price.
Oh, well, let's, let's just, let's.
I understand, just get some numbers down and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay, LPD, cracks in the wall and painting?
I believe that number was 10K. Just put them down, ten K. Okay, and what are we talking about? I know South Fire was, you know, not built correctly, I understand all that. What are we talking about here?
If we went with the wrap, this was a quote prior to the prices going up in May, the wrap came in at twenty-five K. If we went with PVC, that was about thirty-five thousand.
All right, we'll just take the PVC, 'cause it's no maintenance. And painting the siding?
That could probably be around seven thousand.
Seven. Okay, town hall trim replacement?
We spent seventy-eight hundred dollars just for the south side. We'd have to do...
So we'll call it ten?
I, more than that, John, 'cause we've got...
Twenty?
Let's go with fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. The courtyard walkway replacement, what are we talking about here?
Well, let's see, I just did the library, and that was, which is a much smaller unit, that was eight thousand.
So what are we talking, double?
Twelve.
Okay. Who's got a calculator? Ready to go?
Six hundred and six thousand.
Okay, so those are the items you know about, it's six hundred and six thousand, is what you're saying? I don't know if those are good or bad numbers, but that's, you know, those are the numbers you're telling us as part of your presentation, you see as, and over what period of time are we talking about here, Steve? Are we talking a three- to five-year period?
Three to fives.
Okay. Okay, so we're talking about six hundred and six thousand dollars over a three- to five-year period? And then the unknowns. Okay, based on that, questions?
Okay, so can I go back to what I was saying?
Absolutely, let's just all be on the same page.
No, 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 I know, I'm just doing, trying to do my due diligence.
No, don't have any problem with that.
Okay, so, a lot of these things, like, do you know what the, what is the actual lifespan of these HV units? What are the lifespans of the boilers? Now, my boiler's been in my house for twenty years, and I have no problem with it. The guy comes in and services it, and says it's fine. And I would think that, you know, it would be the same, if not better, in a town hall, because you have a bigger, more commercial-grade boiler. I don't have HVAC, so I can't speak to that. But I can tell you, I just got a quote to have my roof done, stripping it, replacing all the wood, putting new wrap on it, and architectural shingles? And my house is, I don't know, the size of it is twenty thousand square feet or whatever, twenty-five thousand square feet, and the total cost was six thousand dollars. So I question these prices. I mean, I just, I really do.
Well, for instance, the library, we got three quotes back, and when we did the library roof, and they ranged from...
I'm not saying you didn't, I'm just saying, I question the prices.
And I would question the six thousand dollars that you're gonna get on your roof.
Well, I went to three different roofing companies myself, in this town, and in Derry, and they all came in at around six thousand.
Okay.
So I'm going by my own personal experiences, because that's all I can really go by. So, back to the money, so you already have a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars?
Yes.
And if you were to prioritize this list in the back that John just went through?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna get to it. How would you prioritize them? What would be the top five that you feel would have to get done? Or, you know, like, if they don't get done, the roof is gonna cave in, or something bad is really, really gonna happen?
The access center.
Okay.
South fire. Town hall.
Are there's two on South Fire, which one, both of them?
I would, the trim is definitely number one.
Okay.
And then the trim on the library, as you will go by and see, it's really deteriorating in the town hall.
And those are the top five, and you think those are gonna have to be done reasonable to say within the next two years, three years?
South...
Or immediately?
Nah, South Fire should be immediately. That's in real bad shape.
So that's the biggest one, is South Fire?
Biggest one, yes.
Even though you said it was number two?
I wasn't listing these, and, why did I list them?
I asked for the top five, and you said number one was the access center.
Yes, number one, access center roof.
Then you just said the one that had to get done was the fire station.
Right.
So which one is it?
It's the access center.
All right. So that needs the roof, and then number two. And, John, do you know the, you wrote down the numbers, I did not? Could you just give me what the access center, Leach Library, South Fire trim, and town hall cost? The top five?
Sorry, I was working on other numbers.
It's okay, I'm sorry. I just, I should've wrote them down, and I didn't.
Are you keeping track, Justin?
I have the numbers, I don't have them associated with what's what, so...
Well, I just did them, and if you have, you just, you didn't write the numbers down?
Nope, I did, so I'm just matching them right now.
So I have to figure out where I wrote them down.
Leave-the-roof project was around thirty, thirty-five thousand.
We have thirty-seven for that, and then...
Then we had for the South Fire trim, ranged from twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand.
So let's see, the AC units were four-fifty...
We aren't asking for the AC units right now.
Okay.
So then the town hall trim, I believe we said ten thousand.
We said, no, we actually said fifteen thousand for the town hall trim.
Fifteen, okay.
And so the last one is the Leach Library trim?
That was...
I didn't give, I didn't give a number on that one.
Leach Library, you know, I actually, I didn't ask you about the Leach Library trim.
That is gonna be considerably more, due to the fact that that over there has very wide, it's not standard size, so whatever we do is gonna be very expensive.
So if town hall's gonna be, town hall a total of twenty-two for the whole building, you had a seven you spent already, plus another fifteen, so what am I talking, double?
Well, since South Fire is thirty-five, I'm gonna have to say that we're probably in the fifty range.
So now we're at six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
I think Deb just wants the five.
I just was looking for the five, so it was thirty-seven.
Hundred and thirty-one thousand.
I'm sorry?
Hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Hundred and thirty-one thousand, which would be doable with the money that you already have in the account right now?
That would be correct, with the following exception.
I'm listening.
I also have to do winter maintenance, which has been running anywhere up to forty-eight thousand dollars.
And that's nowhere else in the budget but here, so why wasn't it listed?
It is listed.
I don't see winter maintenance.
It's right in expenditures. Each year, you'll go down in that list of expenditures, there's winter maintenance. So if you go to two thousand and nineteen...
Page three, Deb.
I'm looking. So, I'm looking here, so you're saying that all of these things, which don't have any prices, you have no idea what they're gonna cost all year? Is part of your, what you're looking for? But you're budgeting for X amount of money, not knowing what they're gonna be, correct?
I'm saying, on page three, these are the items that we can have to maintain.
When you say winter maintenance, that's what, salting it, sanding it?
Plowing, hauling the snow off? Because sometimes we get...
Doesn't the Department of Works do that?
No.
So, but I thought that was their job, why is that your job now?
In two thousand and twelve, there was an agreement to have the school district do a split plowing. That fell through, because the school said, well, the first thing we're gonna do is take care of the school, I understand. The highway department plows highways. So I get, you know, they don't come in, once in a while I can get them with a payloader to come in and push snow around. So now I'm down to finding contractors that will come in with the assistant. I have to say, Sean Goodenown has been very good to me of helping, doing some of the plowing over there. Plus, we've got the access center, we've got the fire station, central fire, we've got all the walkways.
Okay, so all of these are plowed by an outside agents, because we don't, the town, personally, like you, doesn't have plows, correct, for that?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have to, we have to bid it out, get a plow guy for the year. So would it be good to see a dollar amount for that? Like, what that is on average? Like, take a couple of years and divide it by and say...
If you look at the present, if you look at the presentation, I've listed out every year, it ranges from thirty thousand up to forty-eight thousand.
But it says DPW. Is that what you're saying, calling it, is DPW, as you? Is that what I'm looking at?
So for instance, if you go to page seven, and you go to two thousand and nineteen, you go to the right-hand side, thirty-six K, winter maintenance.
Okay, so we'll say that it's around thirty-six?
No, previous year, I've gone up to forty-four thousand or forty-eight thousand. Depends on the winter.
Okay. I'm trying to understand this.
So, by not putting it in the budget, if we have a year where it's sixty degrees all year, we don't get any snow?
Yeah.
We're able to hold this money for next year.
Okay.
So that way, we're able to use this money for the projects that are within reason of the expendable maintenance trust fund. Meanwhile, if we were to put this in the budget, we have to use that money, or we lose that money, it goes to undesignated fund balance. And then next year, we have to ask for it again.
Okay.
Does that answer, does that help?
Kinda, kinda. But I mean, I'm just trying to get to a point where this year, being a year that it is, and I wouldn't be doing my job here if I didn't fight for the taxpayers out there who are struggling and having issues, to try to get them from point A to point B, with keeping money for them. So that's what I'm trying to figure out. I mean, so what you're telling me is you need your, what is it, one sixty...
That's what's currently in there, one sixty-three.
That's what's in there, plus the one hundred and thirty-seven?
One eighty.
One eighty.
One eighty, plus the one eighty is what you need to get by for just a year, three-hundred thousand dollars.
And what we, what I'm also saying is, for instance, if the PD had another seventy-five-thousand-dollar HVAC unit go, where does that fund come from? That's why we have the expendable maintenance, and we've been rolling those funds in there.
But doesn't each department have maintenance in their budget?
I don't think Bill Hatz has seventy-five thousand in his budget for...
I don't know, I'm trying to understand, I'm not picking on anybody.
No, they do not.
Okay, but they have a maintenance built in.
They have a maintenance in their budget for doing PM, which should be general maintenance of the units, light fixtures, light bulbs.
So like that electrical plumbing, basic...
Yeah, the light, the light stuff.
Fire systems, alarms, those things?
You have to do, every year, you have to do your elevator inspection. Every year, you gotta get your fire alarm inspected.
Right.
Sprinkler system.
Right.
Those are the things that are coming out of the budget, out of the individual department's budget.
But they're here, too.
What I'm doing is, if something fails, we're saying, some of these items to replace is, they wouldn't have seventy-five hundred dollars to replace a logic board in the elevator, or controls on the boiler. That's where expendable maintenance trust is coming in to assist fixing these things that they don't have in their budget.
So are you trying to say you're managing the infrastructure? That's what you're saying, okay.
So I'm not here to pay to change filters in the HVAC unit, for instance, or to change a light bulb. There's, there are things that fail, like a radio control box is like two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars. Well, you take twenty-five hundred dollars out of their PM budget, or maintenance budget, now they're down to nothing. So that's why the expendable maintenance is there to assist on these kinds of things.
Okay, and...
Excuse me, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, first of all, I object to the characteristic that suggesting that we be honest with the taxpayers is a scare tactic. I think that, I think if we have one council saying that she's fighting for the taxpayers, that's a lovely narrative to put out there. However, when you fight for the taxpayers, you've gotta be honest with them. And I use the, I use the example of buying a new house in London Derry, deciding not to maintain it. Let me change the example. You bought, just bought a new car, or maybe even a used car, but you decide, you're not gonna change the oil in that car anymore. Or you're not gonna bring it to a mechanic when the engine light goes on to see what's wrong with it and to maintain it, because you just decide that maintenance isn't important to you. And if you're looking out for your house budget, then you might end up blowing the engine in that car, and having to buy a brand-new car instead of maintaining it. It's the same thing we've just heard with this presentation. With all this equipment, with these twenty-eight million dollars worth of facilities, if we don't maintain them, they'll start to break prematurely, and we'll be in line for some very expensive fixes. And that's protecting the taxpayer, if you wanna know the truth, by not maintaining these facilities is not protecting the taxpayer. It's, it is deceiving the taxpayer, and letting them believe that these things will maintain themselves, or that we have some mechanic on the second floor that's gonna go around and fix everything. Now, when the, when the heating system fails in the library, and we have no maintenance trust fund, what should we do? We'll just check out books in the cold, 'cause we're not gonna turn the heat on, we can't afford to fix it, because we have no fund for it? Or the police station, same thing. Or if the roof starts to leak in one of our expensive buildings, and we have incredible amounts of water damage, because we've decided it's not important to maintain the roof, because we're protecting the taxpayers. Excuse me, that's not protecting the taxpayers, that's letting the taxpayers down. These are, to do, to do what you're suggesting is an, is an unwise decision. And I, and I'm saying that the taxpayers were misled, or were not fully informed of the importance of this fund last year. And it's gonna cost a lot more in the long run if we decide not to maintain these buildings. I've given you the example of a new home purchased by taxpayers, and I've given you an example of an automobile that won't be maintained by a, by new automobile owners. It's not a wise decision. And we're here to make wise decisions, and it, sometimes it costs money. And we have a, by the way, a purchasing procedure that is auditable, you just heard the audit earlier in the meeting, they didn't find anything wrong with our purchasing process. That process requires competitive bids on items that we purchase, and we do that to make sure that we're not overspending. So, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think it is important that we be honest with our taxpayers, we explain to them the consequences of failing to maintain these twenty-eight million dollars' worth of capital facilities that we have, and not mislead them to think that we're protecting them by failing to maintain these buildings.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to respond.
Mr.?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I totally agree with Tom. We have fifteen buildings, ten of those buildings are over ten years old. The equipment is aging on them. I think that Mr. Cotton has done a damn good job at taking care of our buildings and being responsible, fiscally responsible. You can't compare a residential roof to a commercial roof. You have commercial roofs that are thirty feet in the air, residential maybe, 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 two, two stories. The square footage is totally different, they've gotta bring totally different equipment in, so you can't compare that. Mr. Cotton has been doing this for a long time, and he has a lot of experience, and this type of thing is a best guess. Because if, if the air conditioning unit goes on the, on the, on the library, and we have a problem with the, with the air conditioning unit at the police station, we've gotta fix them. Where are we gonna get the money? Where are we gonna get the money, Deb? This, this is good, and it has to be supported. This, this is good, and it has to be supported. And if we don't, we're not doing the taxpayers a service. Because you know what happens? All of a sudden, things aren't funded, you gotta fix it, contractors know it, and then they just stick it to you. I know 'em in the business, I see it. All of a sudden, an air conditioning unit that costs ten thousand dollars, all of a sudden, it's up to fifteen to twenty. 'Cause they know that they have you. So, you're wrong, Deb.
Okay.
This is, this is a good plan, and he's done a damn good job to manage it.
All right, so, if I could break down some numbers before I let you go ahead, would that be okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I'll let you respond if you'd rather I not break the numbers down.
I, I would like to do it now before I just, like, explode.
Okay, please proceed, then, please proceed.
Okay. Number one, I think it's a smart thing to do, but I don't like the idea that some of these things, I feel, we paid a lot of money for, and then failed within a year or two, three years, they weren't good quality, we have no recourse. And as far as the audit, the auditing company doesn't look at our purchasing policy, they look at our financials and our financials only. Um, I think we have some issues with our purchasing policy, and, and hopefully, we'll be able to look at that.
Counselor Paul, that's not true. The auditors do look at the purchasing policy, and they make sure we are in compliance, they do spot checks of various purchases.
Uh, okay, they look at spot checks, but they're not looking at it, per se, as to policy.
Come through the chair, that includes you, too, as well. All right? She's speaking, let her speak.
Thank you. Um, so, what I'm saying, what I'm trying to get to, just so you understand, is yes, I do think that we need to take care of our buildings. No, I wouldn't wanna neglect our buildings, that's stupid. But, we need to do it responsibly and, and look at what we're doing. I looked at some of these prices, and yes, I do think that they are extremely high. And Jim's telling me I'm totally wrong, but we've been paying for these things, and, and I've heard you say, we've gotten basically taken advantage of by some of these people. We've had things fixed two, three times, and there wasn't a warranty, and we've had to go back, and there've been issues. And so, this thing, this, that little thing, and it's not you, just understand this, this isn't personal. It's the process of how we're getting there. I think that we need to do this a little bit more responsibly, um, to get to where we're going. A, a person who buys a four hundred thousand dollar house, and they get their roof fixed, and they got supposedly the best roof, the best price, with all this stuff, and then, four years later, they've got a leak, and then there's no recourse? And it's happened, and don't say it hasn't, 'cause it has, I, I, I know it has. And so, that's where I'm struggling with this money. And yes, we would come up with it, wouldn't we be able to take it out of the undesignedated fund balance if we had it? Um, I'm sure there'd be ways around it. Well, we were able to find the shortage for the fire station out of, I mean, that-
So, that fund is controlled, we'd have to go to Superior Court, we'd have to petition the voters. We can't just take-
I'm sorry?
We can't just take money out of the undesignedated fund balance, we just, we can't. We either have to go to the voters, or go to Superior Court.
Okay, but we obviously found five hundred thousand dollars for a shortage.
That's the only one time, it's the only purpose we can use it for. The rules are very strict around that fund.
Okay.
You know, some of the things, Deb, that you talk about, for instance, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, the roof on the library. All right? We didn't have a clerk of the works on that job. Am I correct with that?
Sorry, we didn't have what?
And what happened was, they didn't nail, they didn't, did they, or did they not nail the library roofing down correct?
After investigating, the, they did not nail the roofing shingles properly. And per the guarantee or warranty, if you do not start reporting issues back to the vendor in the first year, in follow-on years, which I was not here, these, this is, this is, this is the reason that the shingles were falling off, because if they had noticed that at the year one, year two, whenever they started falling off, then we would've had some, something to go back to the vendor and, and whoever built the building, and say, "Look, you did the shingles wrong." Same thing at North Fire. We went there, we put on siding.
Yeah.
Through the, through what was recommended, it was certainty siding, or hardy, certainty. The minute I knew there was an issue, we found that there was a legal suit against that company. We took action, we got the building completely re-sided. So, if you don't act on those, we got the siding for free, I had to pay for the labor and the trim that we wanted on that building. So, it's, when you find something, you can't just put it off, you gotta report it. And that's two examples that, the minute you see something, start reporting it.
And that's where I was trying to get, what is the bare-bones dollar amount that we can put in here to be cautious, yet fiscally conservative, that would be okay to put on here? That's why I was going for the one, two, three, four, five, that's where I was heading.
I understand.
And, and that's where I was trying to get it. We have a little bit in the kitty, and, and it's mainly for this year, it really is. I, I mean, I'm, I'd rather be, I'd rather be cautious than not cautious.
Hold on.
And so, that's my two cents on it. So, John, you can do your numbers.
Is it okay if I run?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, let's just run some numbers, okay? You have a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Year one, you pick up a hundred and eighty, that's three hundred and forty-three. Year two, you pick up another hundred and eighty, that's five hundred and twenty-three. Year three, um, you pick up another hundred and eighty, that's seven hundred and three. Year four, you pick up another hundred and eighty, that's nine hundred and eighty-three thousand. Okay, over a four-year period. I'm going off your three-to-five year of when you think you're gonna spend money. You're gonna spend six hundred and fifty-six dollars on maintenance over that three-to-five years, plus a minimum of probably a hundred and sixty thousand on plowing and salt and all those, those things. So, I'm at eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars versus the possible nine hundred and eighty-three you would need, which is my differential of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for the unknown. Does that sound about right? So... I'm looking for feedback. Is that, is that about where we need to be, considering we didn't get any money last year? Yes, no? Is that the bare minimum? Yes.
You think that's the bare minimum, right?
Yeah, we kick the can down the road, and it costs us more money in the long run, John. I'm asking, I'm not telling.
So, what was the bare minimum again, John, just to be clear?
So, what I'm saying is, is I'm, I'm taking this hundred and sixty-three, and I'm handing in a hundred and eighty a year for four years, which comes up to nine hundred and eighty-three thousand. The gentleman has told me he needs six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars over the next three-to-five years that he's aware of. And, and that he's aware of, plus a hundred and sixty thousand, at forty thousand a year for five years. Plowing and maintenance and winter maintenance, et cetera, which takes me to eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which leaves me a safety valve of, I think that's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So, I, I basically will leave myself at the end of four years with the same amount of money I have right now.
John, you'll actually leave yourself with less? The four years at one eighty brings you to eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, not nine hundred and eighty-three thousand?
Oh. Thank you. Um, eight hundred, so it's eight hundred and eighty, I, I, yeah, I'm actually gonna leave myself with less money. So, I, I, I am at the bare minimum. If I'm looking at that, 'cause I'm, you know, I'm, uh, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm actually tight. 'Cause if I spend fifty thousand dollars a year on winter maintenance, I'm out of money, out of money. Yes, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we need to be cautious about using our own personal experiences as, uh, the basis for making decisions for the community. I mean, I, I know that one councilor mentioned that our heating system lasted over fifteen years, and is objecting that these heating systems aren't lasting so long. Well, my heating system, I had to replace it after eight years, a top-line heating system, it died after eight years. And by the way, the warranty ended at the eight-year birthday. The, uh, the roof, I had my roof estimated, forty thousand dollars for a home roof. I didn't buy it, I thought it was way too high, but that's what the estimate came in at. As a former math major, and a, pretty keen on probability and statistics, when you have one data point, the only thing you can conclude after that one data point is, you need more data points. You can't conclude anything with one data point. So, to try to make inferences to what the town expenses should be based on our own personal experiences with our own vehicles, with our own homes, or whatever, uh, is, is a flawed, uh, supposition, and I would caution all of us against trying to do that.
Okay, so, where I stand is, based on what the gentleman has presented, um, if I do a run rate of a hundred and eighty thousand a year, continue at the same run rate, um, and taking into consideration the six fifty-six, and using a number of a hundred and sixty thousand at forty thousand dollars a year for winter maintenance, I leave myself cushioned after four years of sixty-seven thousand dollars for anything that's unknown. I say I'm pretty tight. I mean, does someone wanna propose a different number, or something else?
Steve, I wanted to, um, just comment myself, trying to be quiet, trying to digest everything here. I also want to applaud you for, um, the work that you've done, and it's been worked, worked for you for a lot of years, and I know that you take, uh, uh, you take it personally, and, um, sometimes when you do have a job and you're passionate about it, um, you can't help but do that. You know, you wanna do right by the town, and, and we appreciate that. Um, I guess my concern with this is that you've made a great presentation, and I think that, I think to echo some of the comments that are already made, I think we really need to make sure that, um, the taxpayers know, um, about these things. And so, Kevin, I think that you said we're gonna be going out there and trying to educate, um, the town a little bit more based on this, and I think that's gonna be the key, 'cause I, we can get a consensus here, and we can have our opinions, but at the end of the day, um, in order to get this passed, and I, and I also agree, um, that we have to work harder to get this passed next year. So, um, the educational piece, we really ought to work on, and, uh, just wanted to make sure that, uh, we underline that importance of it. Thank you.
Okay. Any, um, yes, sir?
To follow up on, uh, Counselor Green's statement, I'm sitting here looking at, and this is just a draft, these aren't final, and I understand that, but we have nine warrant articles after the operating budget. And we spent a lot of time talking about the importance of, of maintenance, which, which I agree with. How do we help the voters to understand priorities? Is this the year that the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund is the most important? If they choose to vote for four, not five, how do we help them to understand which ones are our greatest priorities? I don't have an answer, I just throw that out there as an open question and a consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could follow up on that. So, Jonathan, one of the things we started doing, um, years ago is all of these reoccurring items, uh, outside of the operating budget that we knew we were gonna have, um, need funding for on an annual basis, we started including on the warrant. Um, and we did that to keep the tax rate flat. One of the reasons I'm disappointed among many that it failed last year is because, uh, if it, if it then, um, this year, if it, if it's, uh, accepted, that causes a slight spike in the, uh, tax rate, I think it's three cents, uh, three or four cents. So, by putting these on every year, the idea was to build it into the tax rate, 'cause you then keep the tax rate flat over the years, and you're still find, funding the items that are needed to be funded, uh, on an annual basis.
Okay. Anything further on Expendable Maintenance Trust? From anyone? Yes, sir?
Ray Presley and three Gary Drive. Uh, I've heard a lot of conversation here, a lot of good points brought up. Steve Cotton?
Yes.
Oh, no, no, you don't have to tell, no, I just say, Steve's doing a great job, you know? And, yes, we, we have expenses, yes, we need to take care of our building, absolutely. But, I, I think a part of it, and, and a lot of people have brought it up, is educating the general public so that they understand better. I mean, we, we have expenses, we got to take care of our buildings, absolutely. But, I think a lot of times, people really don't understand, you know? They get in the voting booth, and they say, "Oh, jeez, that one? No, I don't think so." You know, a, a lot of people just don't understand what, what expenses are, you know? But, I think, uh, I think it is important that we do look at things and, and know what the costs are. One other thing is, we used to have what we call a rainy day fund. Because, wait a minute, a windstorm comes along and it blows the roof off this building. Not expected, what are we gonna do? We need to have money set aside for something like that. I don't think we have anything we call a rainy day fund. I think, you know, maybe it's, uh, undesignedated fund balance or something, I don't know what it is. So, we do need to have money set aside, and we do need to have money for maintenance. But, uh, I don't think the average person really understands well. And what do we, what can we do to educate people? Maybe we need to have the town council and the town manager, um, have some little get-together. Oh, yeah, I know, coronavirus, we can't do that anymore. How else can we do it? We have a, uh, cable center over here, but then again, who watches cable? We have newspapers, we have a bunch of newspapers. We have radio, anybody listen to radio? I don't know. But I think we need to educate people better so they understand how money's being spent. And yes, people, a lot of people are hurting, a lot of people don't have money, a lot of people are getting hit with additional expenses, and we do really need to look at what our priorities are. Okay? If we have a sidewalk that is cracking, okay, maybe you've got a liability issue there. Maybe we do need to take care of it, okay? But, some other items, maybe we can set aside. Maybe, I don't know. Let's just look at it. And, by the way, let's all try to get along. I mean, sometimes people get a little edgy, I mean, Steve was probably feeling as though he's getting beaten up here.
Address the chair, sir.
Pardon?
Address it this way.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. I can't, can I look at him? I just wanted to address, you know, say that, you know, he was- He was kinda getting beaten up here a little bit, you know, maybe he felt that way. But, on the other hand, uh, people are entitled to ask questions, and I think that's what they're doing.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir?
One last comment. I, I, we are served by two or three newspapers in town. I would hope that we could convince the newspapers to editorialize about how important it is to support, uh, the Expendable Maintenance Trust, uh, to avoid, uh, larger costs down the road to fix these things.
Okay. Thank you. So, nothing further on Expendable Maintenance Trust?
Mr. Chair, Christine has a comment on the phone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go.
I would just like to say, in regards to, um, the expenditure fund, is that, oh, I hate the echo. Yes, we do need to be conservative, but I also understand the point that the buildings need to be maintained. Um, I know commercial buildings are gonna cost a lot more than, um, a roof, or anything like that. I think Steve Cotton's done a really good job at breaking down the numbers, and I agree that if we just keep kicking the can down the road, things are going to become more expensive, hourly rates are gonna go up, um, companies are gonna start charging more money just to make up the financial losses they've been facing for the last year. I highly recommend that the town council do some kind of a campaign, like the fire department did, for the new radios that they did a year or two ago. I think that would help out a lot. I certainly, for one, even with the limited income we have, and with everything we're going on with the current health situation in our household, I would be willing to pay three, four cents more, at least for the town side. I would be willing to pay three, four cents more, at least for the town side. Over.
Thank you. I believe the town managers requested another presentation for GIS.
I did. I'd invite Amy Kiesak to the podium. GIS is another item that failed on last year's warrant. It shows up annually. And again, I think it may be that people just didn't know what the GIS, what its purpose is, who it serves. And so I've asked Amy to give a brief presentation on it.
Thank you very much. Give Colleen a second to pull up the presentation. So GIS, what is it that we do? So our GIS department is geographic information systems. You can go to the next slide. We have a public facing GIS that's called MapGeo. It's available on our website. We update the tax maps every year. We do roadmap map updates every year, trail maps. There's an outdoor recreation guide on the website. We work with public works department on sewer maps. We work with the police department on the election planning maps. This is an example of our public facing GIS, our MapGeo. If you want to go ahead and click the link. You're seeing it here. You're seeing it there. Okay.
Yeah, it's a change in the screen and everything.
Okay, there's a picture of some of the things that you can see on the MapGeo, the public facing site. There's a bunch of layers that are on there. You'll see the 2017 imagery, which is the imagery that was last flown for the town. You'll see previous imagery. So we can look at the change in the landscape of the town over time. There's also a new one called application tracking. And what that has done, it's been a project we've been working on in the planning department for the last couple of years, last year or so, where we have interfaced our online GIS map with our application tracking software in the planning department so that you can now interactively go in and look at what active projects there are in town. So you'll see dots that represent where a project is. It brings up a window. And then when you click on that link, it takes you to the application summary and all the information about that current project. This has been a work in progress. When we first started it, we've been evolving how we enter data in so that it is easier to understand and more efficient in the way we put projects in. So in the case that you just saw, there were four dots on top of each other. As we've evolved and learned and made things more efficient, we now have one set of dots for each project going on.
Being told it went over TV, well.
All right, go to the next one. That's okay. All right, departments, the GIS department supports. I actually am involved and work with just about every department there is in town hall and out there. We work with assessing, police and fire, public works. I'm in the planning and economic development department, and we do work with the schools. The warrant article funds, our flyovers are about every five years. We break down the cost of that so that every year we accumulate some money for it. And that way we can go and pay for our imagery about every five years. The last time we flew in 2017, we got both aerial imagery, which is the picture on the left, and the oblique imagery, which is the picture on the right. What the oblique imagery allows us to do is it allows us to get 360 view of buildings. This is useful for the police department, the fire department, and for our assessing department, and for the planning department. Go ahead. We work with assessing department. We create the tax maps, which is what you see here. Every year we produce new tax maps. We also work with them for land analysis and visualization. This is a page and section book that we do for the fire department. So every year we update a booklet that the fire department uses, which breaks the town into a series of 71 maps showing all the addresses, all the roads. And it makes it easier for them to locate things and figure out where they're going and what they need to know. We do work with trail maps. You'll see this is the maps that we work with the conservation commission on and produce. When you go to Kendall Pond or over to the Musquash, you'll find these maps printed in the map boxes at various trailheads. We update a base map every year that is available to the general public. They can be requested in the town clerk's office or up in the planning department. This is something that we do for free for people in the town. We work with the public works department. This is an example of a sewer facility map. We help them with their sewer cleaning and the federal reporting that they have to do in showing it graphically what is on the ground and what they're planning on cleaning and what's been cleaned. Moving forward, our next flyover is planned for the spring of 2020. That will have been five years since our last flyover. And a lot of things change, as you know, in that amount of time. This flyover will support the update for the master plan that's going to happen in 2022, 2023 timeframe. The data will be used by the police and fire department again. We also, for part of the GIS is we update address data, which is also given to E911 and shared with them so that they can keep their information up to date. We are constantly going back and forth with them and working with them to make sure all addresses in the town are represented in the appropriate locations. This will support the assessing department, especially in this time with the COVID. They've been able to use the imagery to do some field work, not in the field, but in-house first. And it reduces the amount of time that they have to go out and be in the field and around buildings and people. Again, we support the building department. We just finished a series of maps for the snowplow routes. And we do sewer cleaning maps. We do drainage maps and work with them for all kinds of things. We also support a bunch of other town boards and commissions that include conservation commission, planning board, ZBA, and all the other ones that are out there. So any questions?
Do you want to comment, Amy, just on the level of detail in the flyover and the LiDAR versus?
Yeah, so at the last flyover, we not only got the aerial imagery, but we also received LiDAR data and the oblique images. And the LiDAR data gives us a lot more detail. We were able to create one foot contour lines. And we were able to use it to, for some historic projects, I worked for locating some cellar holes in the Musquash. We also used it for.
I think especially that it gives a base of.
Sorry, I'll come to my. Just for a record, as folks in the town are aware, we've seen land use and seen a lot of changes in land use patterns in the town over the past decades. And I think having an accurate updated layer of the GIS mapping and the aerial mapping helps us to better understand and especially going into a master plan update, which as folks may or may not know is required to be updated every 10 years. Having that updated aerial imagery gives us a really good base plan so we know what changes we've seen in the land use patterns and can really drill that down to a level of detail when it comes to elevation changes, topography, water resources, everything. So it really is a cumulative overall look at the town that gives us a very good base that, as Amy has explained, goes townwide and what it can be used for. It also gives us the ability to track land use change over time, which is always very helpful for a master plan as we look into doing build outs and things like that.
I believe that the school board also uses our maps for their bus routes and confirmation for the bus routes and so forth.
Yes, they do. Any questions?
I could see better over there. So are there any questions for, yes, Jonathan?
What's, trying to think how to phrase the question. Are there not commercially available aerial views of our town that we could use instead of doing our own flyover? I'm thinking Google Earth and probably others that we may have access to that we just purchase a little piece of?
We, we will check into all options that we have. Oftentimes, the Google Earth doesn't include the oblique images. It doesn't give us the same kind of access to the detail that we want. We certainly will look into all options as we go into this next flyover because as you know, technology changes a lot in five years. And so we will do our due diligence to see what's available and what is the best option to fill all the needs that we have.
My understanding is Google borrows images from people like us, right?
Yeah, they end up buying off of other contracts.
Understood.
John?
Yes?
Thank you. This came up at the State House for, there is a law that requires towns to go out and walk the town lines and every few years. And the same comment came up, Jonathan, that why can't we use the satellite pictures? And the response was from those who know that information is the detail is, may be really good in one neighborhood, but it may be really weak in another neighborhood. So you don't get the detail that you need that's in a flyover. Like in a flyover, you know where all the fire hydrants are and, you know, all those additional things. The detail is much greater than you can get, than you can get on Google Earth. And that was the response that I get because they had the same question.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, I'd encourage anyone who hasn't gone on and actually used all of the different tools that are on the GIS to do it, and then compare it to what you do on Google Earth. The level of detail you get on our imagery is so much more than what you can get on a Google Earth, not to mention the interfacing of the tools that are a part of our GIS with the imagery as opposed to Google Earth. And people may wonder too, why, if they look on our GIS map, there's no leaves on the trees. You can see a lot more when there's no foliage. And if you look at a lot of the Google imagery, they get it in the summertime. And so it's a lot harder to look at land masses when that occurs.
Any further questions? Yes?
Hi, Amy.
Hi.
Can you just answer two questions? I think this is a very useful tool. But could I get a breakdown of how your, you know, how this $28,000 would be appropriated? And is it just a one-time thing or is something you're going to need to do every so many years? Is it the five-year thing when you need it? Or I'm just trying to get an idea of, you know, what it is that you're looking for.
So the $28,000 goes into a fund that every five years we aim to fly the town so that we get new imagery. The cost of the imagery is somewhere $75,000 to $100,000 to do the full flyover and get everything that we need. So by breaking it down every year to the $28,000, then when it's time to do a flight, we have the money and it doesn't impact the town on a, on one big.
So that's the full cost of that $28,000 is really just putting it into a kitty for the one-time flyover that we're going to do every five years, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Amy.
All right, thank you.
Okay, here's how I'm going to proceed going forward. What I'm going to do is, is I'm going to go through the articles. Then I'm going to turn to the town manager at the end for the discussion articles that are not on this list yet. Is there anything further before I move down this path? Okay, Article Three, roadway maintenance expendable trust fund. This is the $650,000 for roadway maintenance. Do I have any questions or comments about roadway maintenance? Yes?
Could you just elaborate as to what exactly that entails that's different than in the DPW maintenance?
I mean, I'll tell you in general, Deb. So the roadway maintenance funds to do the roadways over, it's in two separate funds. One is in this capital account where we've been raising $650,000 every year. And the other portion of it is in the operating budget. So it amounts to about $1.2 million is what we've been appropriating every year. So it's just, it's the same, it's used towards the same thing. It's just we have two separate accounts for it.
Okay, and is this one work the same as Mr. Cotton's? In other words, if there's money left over, it stays in there to use for the next year?
That's correct.
Nodding, yes, okay. And right now, is there anything in that account?
There is about 1.6, 1.7 million.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
There's about 1.6 and 1.7 million.
1.6 to 1.7?
Keep in mind that most of your roadway projects are started in the springtime. So that money gets drawn down pretty quick, starting in the spring through the summer.
So without the $650,000 from March of 2020, you're looking at about $900,000.
So Mr. Charter here.
Mr. Chairman?
COVID, we kind of had to freeze our ability to do projects, correct?
Correct.
So, so Mr. Charter, how many miles of roads do we have in town? 186 miles. And what's our cost per road to reconstruct a road? Reconstruct it.
Per mile?
Million, oh, hell.
Million dollars per mile?
Yep.
So if we were to reconstruct all the roads in town, it costs us $186 million?
Correct.
Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a history lesson, we, for years, were adding debt to the community and borrowing between half a million and a million a year to do this work. And we decided a few years ago that we would try to alleviate the accumulating debt because of that and pay for it each year. And we did it gradually. And now we're at a point where we're assuming no additional debt and we're doing it each year by the drink.
Yeah, that was the, that was actually former Counselor Frida who came up with that formula, so.
Back in 2013.
Yep, so, so he does leave a legacy. Any other questions?
Just one more.
Yes, please.
Just one more. John, so how do you decide which roads you're going to pick to do? I mean, has there ever been a time where you said, this road's supposed to be done, but it looks pretty good, so we're not really going to do it?
What we try to do is we try to keep a good road good. You know, and then again, as the account accumulates, Deb, then we'll have more money in the account if we have to do a full depth reconstruction.
Okay, so there isn't like a set in stone schedule, whether it needs it or not. It's you actually evaluate it.
Correct.
Because, you know, I've heard, and you've got to clarify these things. So you look at a road and you'll say, you know what, we did this five years ago. It really doesn't need to be done. I'm making it up because I have no idea how long it lasts. But I do know that roads that get more trucks have more wear and tear and that one truck equals like 84 cars. So that wears up a road a lot quicker than a road that doesn't get a lot of trucks on it. And so you look at it and you say, oh, it's not bad. And this road's worse, but it wasn't scheduled, so we're going to do that one instead. Because a lot of people are like, well, why did this road get done again? And this road get done again, and my road's still not. And so I just kind of wanted to have you clarify the mindset behind it.
Yep, like I said, we try to keep our good roads good. And then when we do have the appropriate funds, then we can do a full depth reconstruction of the roadway.
And you also have your unknowns, such as the culvert up in the airport area, which is a half a million dollars or something, right?
Harvey Road, Culvert.
Yeah, so and that's your unknown. Okay. Okay, roadway maintenance trust. Any other questions?
Just so the council is aware as well, we're expecting a decrease in our highway funds for next year's budget. And so if that occurs, there'll be less money in the operating budget for roadway maintenance.
And a portion of the operating budget is the highway block grant portion. We have to legally spend that on the roads and highways.
Good, thank you, sir. Article Five, Master Plan Capital Reserve Fund. When was our last master plan completed?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council and budget committee. The last master plan was completed, it was adopted in 2013. So, 2012 to 2013 was that review process. We are required by state statute to update this master plan every 10 years. Just for perspective, in 2012, when the master plan was updated, it cost about $125,000 for that update. The town of Bedford recently completed it or is in the process of completing an update to their master plan. The price of that was about 175,000. Derry is also undergoing an update and I can check with them to see the cost. So, that's why we requested $75,000 to be put into this capital reserve. We would then expect that we would be coming back next year asking for another $50,000 or so to put in the capital reserve again. We're estimating again that, that we'd like to try and save on the budget as much as we can. We do have with good land use layers in our GIS, so funding the GIS capital reserve helps to offset some of the costs of the master planning. But we do anticipate a total budget of about 125 to 150,000 dollars in order to complete the project.
Thank you. Questions for Colleen, yes?
Don't sit down yet. I have to do this. So, I was on that committee. And one of the things we talked about is why we spent that amount of money on it was it was supposed to be a living, breathing document and we were supposed to have, you know, just smaller changes on the next one. So, I guess I'm kind of curious, are you planning on doing a full-blown master plan? Or just enhancing what we already have and updating it and making it, you know, more to what's going on right now? So, that, that's why I was wondering about the cost because...
Some of that will need to be a, a further discussion. I think at this point, we're anticipating that 125,000 is not necessarily full-blown, start from scratch. We do have a lot of good information and good data in the last go-around. And like I said, we have a lot of data we've continued to gather from GIS and through our ongoing planning projects. But I think there needs to be a, a discussion. There seems to have been, and I wasn't here at the time the last master plan was completed. There seems to have been a, a sort of a theoretical or a, a difference of opinions and what is the right way to plan or approach the town? The village planning concepts and some of the more form-based code items that were included in that master plan have, have, I guess, caused some debate. So, I guess that's something that will, that direction will be determined by what the council, what the planning board and other folks think is the best for the community.
And well, one of my big pushes on that was implementation. And I felt that we dropped the ball a bit by dropping the implementation committee and dropping, moving things forward, which would have been us constantly in a mode of updating the master plan where when we came to this 10-year, it should have been just tweaked. So, I hope that we discuss this further and that we look at, you know, why the implementation committee, you know, disbanded? Why didn't it move forward? And, you know, moving more of the items off the plate so that the document was a live and breathing, you know, document as opposed to a stagnant document, which it is now.
As far as the implementation committee Deb, if I could just point out that the, the planning board did discuss, the implementation committee carried on for, for several years after the plan. And then it was, and forgive me, I don't know if it was a year ago this time or a year and a half ago, that the implementation committee had stalled with meeting. There was some transfer in staff, there had been a focus on sidewalks, there was some transition there. And then at that point, the planning board asked us, the staff, to look at the tasks outlined in the master plan that were accomplished, what was still remaining to be done and looking at a new plan on the horizon. And the determination was made that also partly due to lack of members volunteering to participate in the planning committee and finding members of the community to participate, that the implementation committee was put on hold and expected to be picked up again once we have new tasks that are being identified.
Well, I was on the implementation committee and I, I want to say we were hit with a lot of head, head, headbutting from the planning board and department. And that is what happened with the, we had a lot of people that wanted to get on it and were not being appointed to it. So, there was a lot of conflict there. And I remember having a, a conversation with Mr. Vogel at the time and, and he agreed with me as to what was really going on. And because the only thing that they wanted to get done at the time, not the department, but the board, was just the updating of the zones. And that was, once that was done by the outside agency, they didn't want to look at anything else. So, I, I have a issue with that whole thing and this isn't the time or place. But, so I, I, I'd like to look at what a partial or an augmented price would be?
Sure.
For, for a master plan along with this one?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything further for Colleen? Thank you. Article seven, Pillsbury Cemetery Expansion Capital Reserve Fund. $75,000. We have only one operating cemetery in town with plots available going forward. Are there any questions with regards to the Pillsbury Cemetery?
Could we explain what this is actually for, what it does?
Justin? Could you give an explanation of what the capital reserve fund is for the cemetery, please?
Yeah, like what does it cover, what does it do?
So, Steve will come up and explain in more detail, but the Pillsbury Cemetery is based in four phases, I believe. And we're currently in the middle of the third one, correct?
Yes. Back in 2004, we started out with the phase one portion. We brought in 147 plots. Then in 2011, 12, we had phase two, which brought in 187 plots. Of those two, phase one and phase two, I currently have two cremation plots and three full and two singles. What these, so in 2011, they set up the Pillsbury Cemetery Expansion Project, knowing that we're going to run out of space. So, fortunately, whatever you want to say, Woodmont donated part of that program where they donated, but they gave us three to four acres of land next to the existing phase one and phase two. When that's fully built out, we'll have 625 plots. Last year, we finished the phase three, which I'll call it phase three A. Because we knew when we do the, when we did, to do the whole project, we're somewhere between 800 and 900,000 dollars to build out that whole three to four acres for cemetery. So, we completed phase one, that gives us 125 plots. And today, I have like 123 available. What this fund does is it keeps adding funds into that so we can go and do phase B, C, and D. Phase A was running around 260,000 just to do that first phase. So, we got to plan on at least that much because that was the simple part. Each additional one is going to be more than 260,000 dollars. What we're trying to do is get a hold of the, head of the curve because back in 2011, we calculated that the number of burials was going to be somewhere between eight and 12 burials a year. That has now gone up to 28, 32 burials a year. At that rate, we are going to run out of space. So, what I'm trying to do is get enough funds in that thing so we can, we can, that capital reserve, so we can get another phase behind us so that we aren't getting a 700, 800,000 dollar bill that we need down the road to complete that cemetery.
I do have a crazy question.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the crazy question...
I don't stack.
But, um, anyway, why so much? When I drive by it all the time and, and it drives me crazy because when I think of a cemetery, I think of a lot of grass. And why did we pave like this and not leave it just go like around or maybe one in the middle? So, that we could have gotten maybe more lots in the, in the spa, in the cemetery? I, I just was curious about that more than anything.
Well, you can't be driving over somebody to open up another location. So, what that, what those roads or path give you is, is that you can put your back hole and you could dig on this section and then turn around. Now, if you didn't have that and it was just grass, you would be driving the back hole all over graves and headstones and you can't, you can't get access.
I, I'm just, you know, like I look at all the cemeteries that you see around and they're pretty much all grass. So, I mean, how do they do it? What else?
I'm not too familiar. If you go up the Forest Hill, you go down to, down by Fort London area, there's all regular set.
Yeah, but they're really far apart. They're not, those are really, I'm just curious. You, so you're saying it's for the hoes, I just...
Well, that's the main thing is then you got, you lay them out, you lay the cemetery out and then you get access to get to the cemetery to open up the graves.
Alright, well, thank you.
Maybe, maybe some of those older ones like you're going Glenwood, that back in the day, you know, that was hand shovel. Didn't matter. Yep.
I don't know, my family's buried down at Mount Auburn in Arlington. And it's all grass, really. And they, they, I don't know, they must hand dig, I guess.
Any other questions?
That was it.
In preparing a phase, what goes into preparing a phase? Not just cutting the woods and just seeding?
No, 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 we have to, and Mr. Charter can help me, but we go down, we excavate that soil, existing soil because this is, this is the granite state. So, we've got to get that fill out of there. And then we have a certain requirement of the type of fill that goes back in there. So, we limit the size of any rocks to, I believe it's 12 inches maybe, something small so that if we do dig and we, we can get it out and we're not disturbing. So, all that soil gets, gets replaced. We get drainage we put in. And then we get obviously the road structure with the pavement. Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at Joe.
That's fine.
Okay?
What's the plan if we do run out of space? I mean, are you going to be looking for another place? And then shouldn't that be thinking, shouldn't we be thinking about that?
We should always be thinking about additional property. Because if we, we're at this rate now, I mean, in five years, this, this next phase is going to be full.
So, do you have any spots in town already, it should, I mean, shouldn't that be something we're thinking about as a community?
As a community, we should be thinking. We were just, we've been looking ever since 2011 and this, this came about, so.
But you don't see any other spaces?
No, and, and you can't, you know, you've got to pick the particular spot. You don't want swamp, you don't want...
No, I know, but I'm saying, there's got to be something that we should be really, really looking at.
We should be keeping an eyes out, yes.
So, Steve, you and I talked a couple of years ago about a new concept or technology that they're now using for cremation, which is, for the lack of a better way to explain it, it's kind of an outdoor muslin?
Yeah, we call it like a condo. It's kind of like you go to the post office, you know? You've got the box here and a box there. That is another possibility. A lot of people now have been, are being cremated. Going away from the full, the traditional full burial. Our cremation numbers have really gone up.
So, with the lack of land, maybe it's something we could explore?
Yeah, I mean, that's an area that we could take in the existing, if we had some spots in the existing cemetery in Pillsbury, we could put these boxes or condos in.
I'm not sure what they call them.
Right, forgot the proper name. But that would be an idea because that would, you know, take up much less space.
Okay, any other questions on cemeteries?
Another popular thing that they're doing on back of what John's saying is that they're taking the cremation and they bundle it and it becomes part of a tree. And they're making what they call tree cemeteries so that you can go and supposedly your loved one grows up inside the tree and you can go talk to your loved one. But that, that, they're doing it in Boston a lot now because they are lacking space and it's just a popular thing, I guess. There you go, look at, look at trees.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, chief, fire equipment. Article eight.
$100,000 in capital reserve. For the RC is $50,000 from the undecided fund balance.
What are you looking for here, chief?
Uh, so this is the capital reserve fund for both fire and EMS equipment. As stated in my presentation back a couple of weeks ago, what this fund does is support items that the operating budget cannot afford. So, this is the structures for the ambulance. You're going to see one of my lieutenants up here in a little bit to, we're having a withdrawal for the turnout gear for the firefighters. So, it's just big-ticket items that the operating budget can no longer support. And back when I started in 2013, there was a schedule. And this schedule, you know, it showed on it different pieces of equipment to be replaced throughout the next 10 years. What we've done as a department and as an organization, committees that we've worked together with, is we've looked at those items that were up for replacement and basically extended the lifespan of those in order to, you know, build up this fund for future purchases that may be unexpected. So, I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? So, we're good?
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Drew, are you going to talk about cable or are you going to let Kevin talk about it?
I mean, this is, you know, this is the cable equipment that we purchased for the cable studio and whatnot. This comes out of our franchise fee that we have with Comcast. Doesn't require any taxation, it's just to accept the funding that we get for it.
Sorry.
And a portion of this does also go to the school district.
Okay, any questions on cable funds? That comes out of the cable franchise fees. Okay. Alright, now we have a couple of items that we need that are, have come about for discussion. Can we cover those, please?
Sure, there is two more on here, but do you want to skip off them for now?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I, did I, oh, I'm sorry, let me turn over. Apologize. I was hoping we were at the end. $5,000 for recreational capital reserve fund.
Yeah, so this is the rec reserve fund that was established, established last year by the voters. Had $15,000 in it. You may recall, we recently purchased a new mower for a little over 14,000. So, this is just to replenish it with $5,000.
So, I, I told Kevin there was 14, it was 12,769 dollars, 49 dollars.
Thanks, Justin.
Alrighty, yeah, I do remember that one, there was quite a dis...
Wide variety of...
Quite a range on that whole thing.
Wide variety of...
I wanted 40,000 or something.
Yeah.
Okay, number 11, DPW equipment and vehicle lease.
Uh, this is a warrant article that was on last year's warrant. It did fail, but this would be to purchase two six-wheeler trucks and one ton, one-ton pickup. I say purchase, I should have said lease. And so, you'll see the lease amount there in the first year for 55,645 dollars. We're currently throwing good money after bad with the vehicles we have that are constantly being repaired. And so, Public Works has requested this article be moved to the warrant again this year.
Any questions on vehicles for Public Works?
So far, to fix the vehicles, we, that was part of the warrant article last year, we spent roughly 16,000 dollars, which is roughly about 29%, 30% of what the warrant article would have been for, to replace them.
Okay.
Justin, was that for one vehicle, 16, or for all the vehicles? I'm sorry.
I have it right here. It was for, let's see here. We have 1,600 for one of them, 6,600 for another, and then 75 for another.
So, three?
Three. So, this 55 is for three as well.
Thank you.
Questions? Yes, sir?
We are getting close to the end. We are getting close to the end. Ray person, three Gary Drive. I, I just wanted to ask a question in regards to what Kevin had said about vehicles maintenance. We're spending a lot of money on keeping these vehicles. So, I kind of wonder what condition most of the DPW vehicles are in? Because the ones I see on the road seem to be in very good condition. I think the DPW does a great job maintaining the vehicles.
So, DPW does do a great job maintaining the vehicles. They try to do some of the repairs themselves. But you have to keep in mind is the issues we're having are not with the sides, it's with underneath. So, it may look absolutely beautiful on the outside, but the underneath could be salted, rusted from the work they're doing throughout... So it may look absolutely beautiful on the outside, but the underneath could be salted, rusted from the work they're doing throughout the year.
Yes, this is absolutely true. You, you're putting salt on the road, it rusts, it corrosion and so forth, but i- is that the major issue? That the frames are rusting out or the bodies are rusting out?
So I'm getting a nod head that it, yes, that is.
Yes.
Have you met Yanis? Is he not gonna get every penny out of every vehicle? The guy's unbelievable.
Well, that's what I say, I mean, the vehicles I see on the road are very good, and can I just ask, I mean, I, I just saw six brand-new sixteen, uh, six-wheelers, salt trucks, brine trucks. We, we just, we just purchased those?
No, there, there's not six brand-new ones.
There are not six brand-new ones?
There's not six brand-new ones.
Are any, any of them?
They may look at because of the great job they do.
So not, not?
So I believe there's currently two newer ones from not last year's warrant article, but the year before. You have to keep in mind with these vehicles, when we go, we put them out to bid, we do all that fun stuff, it takes a while to get them all up and running. We gotta get the truck, I believe it's from New York, and then the plow is from Maine, and, you know, the salter is from somewhere else, so we have to get all those combined. So it takes a while to get those up and running.
But these are like two hundred thousand dollar vehicles, right, times six?
So, again, not six brand-new ones, two new ones, the other four are older.
Were a couple of years old?
Correct.
And, and they are all these vehicles?
They're all financed, yes.
And we find that's the best way to go?
It, it, with the approval of this, it'll help limit the amount of repairs we have to do, because when they get to this point, we'd be trading them in to get a newer vehicle, so we don't have to do the repairs of this nature.
Yeah, that's kind of another thing I wonder about, I mean, the vehicles that are now going out of service because they're too rusty, does that mean they are no longer serviceable to anybody? I mean, they're just going to the junkyard, or how do we dispose of those?
What we try to do is we try to trade those in when we're purchasing the new one. That way it helps offset the cost of the current vehicle, which we can then spread out over the several years that we're leasing slash financing it.
Right, right, but I mean.
If we were to just go and sell it to a junkyard or put it out to auction, we only receive that revenue in the first year. After that, that, that's it.
But do we have a procedure for that? I mean, do we put them up for bid? Do they go to the state auction, or do they go to the junkyard?
When we go out to bid for the vehicles, we let them know that we have these vehicles that we'd all get to trade in.
Yes.
That goes as well as part of the cost.
Right, but I mean.
So if somebody offers us, let's, I'm just gonna use random numbers here, a hundred thousand for the vehicle and then twenty thousand for the trade-in, and another person offers ninety thousand for the, ninety thousand for the vehicle and then five thousand for the trade-in. Even though that hundred thousand's more expensive, it's a better deal for the taxpayers, because in total, it's only eighty thousand compared to the eighty-five thousand. And that gets spread out along the lease and financing throughout the entire year, so the tax portion is a smaller amount, where if we were to go and put it out to bid, or not put out to bid, if we were to go and put it in auction, we only receive that revenue in one year, so the next year, you're paying the full price of what the vehicle would be.
I think your logic is sound, I'm not sure, but, but, you know, i- i- you, if you're buying the vehicle from a dealer and, and you, you've got a rusted-out vehicle, they don't, they, they don't want it.
So you have to keep in mind, our vehicles, our vehicles are typically specialized, so they can find parts that they do want. Not everyone's going out and buying a six-wheeler.
That's right, that's right.
So they can go and then find parts that they do want, or they're willing, because of the markup of vehicles, as we all know, they're willing to eat some of the difference in order to sell their vehicle.
Okay. I, I just wonder if, if we should not send to the state auction?
So if we were to send them to the state auction, we would receive that revenue in year one?
Yes. Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
So let's say it's a hundred thousand, ten years, ten-year lease. The taxpayers have to come up with ten thousand dollars each year. So if we traded in and we get ten thousand for it, the taxpayers now have to come up with nine thousand each year, rather than the ten thousand. Where that ten thousand, we get the money year one, typically, it'll go into miscellaneous revenue and that will be the end of it. Actually, it'll go into sale of property.
Would it go into, on the signed fund balance, or who that?
If we hit our revenue numbers, it will go into unsigned fund balance, yes, but that will, I mean, we then have to use that money to offset the tax rate. Where doing it this way, it offsets the tax rate automatically.
I'm glad you understand that.
I apologize if I didn't do a good job explaining it in more.
Ray, I'll take it as a compliment that our vehicles look brand-new, even though they're not. We, we try to be good stewards of the taxpayers' appropriations.
Okay. All right, so we have two more items that are not on this list at this point, and could we review those, please?
Sure, so I don't have actual money, dollar amounts on either of these yet, but I do want to bring it to both the council and the budget committee's attention. You may recall, back when we had our Saturday morning budget meeting, I mentioned that there were two warrant articles that were still under negotiation, and it appears both, or at least one, will come to fruition, so I just want the council and the budget committee to be aware for when they do come forward. One is the town and the Conservation Commission have been in negotiations with Annie Mack Senior to purchase the property that is across from Matthew Thornton's school. It's roughly twenty-eight acres, and we'd be looking at the town purchasing approximately five acres of the twenty-eight, and the Conservation Commission purchasing the other twenty-three acres. And again, it's close to having a PNS, and when that does occur, it will be brought to the full council for a vote. It also would need to get the approval of the Conservation Commission as well. So that's item number one. Item number two is that we're also in negotiations right now with Pennechuck Water, the Department of Environmental Services, the Apple Tree Mall, and the neighborhood immediately behind the Apple Tree Mall to potentially bring municipal water to that area as it was affected by PFAS and PFOA. I, again, I don't have the dollar amounts on this yet, although it would not be unprecedented, as the town did use undesigned fund balance a number of years ago to bring municipal water to another section of town. So I, I hope to have an update on both of these matters by the next council meeting, which is slated for the fourteenth, or no, the twenty-first, is that the next one?
I believe it's the twenty-first.
Twenty-first. And then, Mr. Chair, one last item I just wanna go back to, just to clarify for the record, it was mentioned during the discussion of the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund, that the money there needed to be managed more responsibly, and the independent audit was cited alluding to the purchasing policy. And again, I just want to state for the record that the auditors do look at the purchasing policy and how it's being used on an annual basis. To date, we have not received any deficiencies in that particular area, and so I would just ask if there's any counselors who believe that there, it has not been managed responsibly, to bring those items to my attention, and I'm happy to look into them. And also, just for clarification purposes, it was stated that the undesigned fund balance was used to cover the overage on the fire department last year. Counselor Farrell, you stated that that was not the case, which is correct. We cannot just use undesigned fund balance when we feel like using it. The overage was actually covered by a hard spending freeze on personnel costs earlier in the year, and that's how we were able to cover that within the operating budget.
Okay. Um, did you have a question, Jonathan? Did I miss you? You're set?
No issue.
All right, so, it's a public hearing. Do we have any other questions on the budget before I start moving forward?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, public hearing is closed. Okay, so here's, real quickly on this, so I can move on to new business. Here's where, this is what I've been tracking all night. So what I've been tracking all night and through this process is, is, um, so highlights of what I've heard, you know, safer grant, if I, if I remove firefighters, I'm looking at a four hundred thousand dollar, you know, payment to the government. I also have a grant on the police side that I have to, you know, look at and address, but I also have, you know, a contract with the airport in which when and if, not when and if, when the economy comes back, we'll be deploying more resources there. And Public Works, in which, you know, the gentleman earlier today who talked about the plows is certainly considered in part of first responders. My first responder number that we were looking at from those first responder budget areas is five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. I, I'm not hearing anything from the community telling me that they want me to reduce services or want the council to reduce services in the, um, first responder or in the, or any services to the town. Solid waste is fifty-five thousand dollars, which, based on the, the history of recycling, doesn't leave me a lot of room for any, take any chances. So I'm at five eighty-one, and if I take the hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in insurance, that takes me up to six ninety-eight of the numbers of the nine hundred thousand we were talking about. So what I hear, wanna hear from the council is, is that gives us, without eliminating personnel, that gives us somewhere between, that gives us about, correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to discuss. What I, what I, I wanna be very, very clear about something. We are in uncharted territory. I do not have any idea, I think anybody in this room or in this state has any idea what's going to happen over the next six months. And if you do, please, please tell us. If the revenues decline, they don't hold, we will have to address this, and as Tom Dolan said early on, we are in the people business. So everyone needs to remember the revenues need to hold. Right now, they are. And that message needs to go across all forms of government. Mr., you know, Mr. Kip brought in an article from the Wall Street Journal cautioning us on all of this. That's where we are right now, so as we come out of this public hearing, going to December twenty-first, what I wanna, wanna hear from the council, we can either do it tonight or we can do it on the twenty-first. We need to make, we, we need to make some decisions. That's what's on the table, as far as I can tell right now, unless you wanna put other things on the table. So if there's any further comment, let's have it. If there is, if there is not, let's take it to the twenty-first with that. Budget Committee, this is for you, too.
Twenty-first.
Everybody wanna take it to the twenty-first? All right, we're gonna have to address this on the twenty-first. Please hear me. We have a hiccup in revenues. We're gonna have to sit down and have a serious conversation. All right, that's, that's it on budgets tonight, so thank you very much for everyone who participated and who joined us this evening. New business, Resolution twenty-two, twenty, twenty. A resolution creating a committee to update the twenty-sixteen hazardous mitigation plan. Colleen?
So this is related to the public hearing you had earlier, receiving unanticipated revenues for updating the hazard mitigation plan. This is required to be updated every five years, FEMA requires that we update this. The last time it was updated, we contracted out for the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission to perform the update. What we're doing this time around is updating this internally, so the planning department will be taking the lead on this, working closely with the fire department, police, and our other departments in town. Amy Kezak will be using our GIS system in-house to create the mapping for this project. So this is creating the committee that will work and guide the project. It's typically made up of representatives from the departments I've already mentioned, in addition to the Building Department and Department of Public Works, and then two at-large delegates from the community. So we would ask for the council to adopt this resolution authorizing, and this is a creation of a committee that is limited in scope to work on this project, and the committee then ceases to exist once the plan is adopted. So this is a very short-term scope, and we have solicited for community members for those two at-large positions. We'll be coming back to the council for appointment of individuals to those at the next meeting.
Questions for Colleen? Good. I need a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two, twenty dash twenty.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, Colleen. I have the distribution of fire equipment capital reserve funds for, let's see, I think for a hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-six thousand dollars. Yes, chief?
Yep, so this is what we just spoke about. I have Lieutenant Halliwell here, he, he leads my gear committee within the fire department to explain the plan to you, if you folks would like to hear about the plan, but again, this is fifty-six thousand dollars withdrawal out of the capital account that we used to take out of the safety line in our operating budget, but can no longer do so because of the increase in the cost in the gear and the ongoing certifications that we are now having to take out of the safety account annually. So with that, I have Lieutenant.
Personal gear, chief?
Personal protective gear, yeah.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, I have Lieutenant Halliwell.
Stayed here, we should hear him. Come on up, Lieutenant.
Good evening, so the fire department's looking to purchase approximately sixteen sets of protective firefighting equipment. I took over the protective equipment about two years ago under Battalion Chief Operations McQuillan, and since that time, what I've done to implement some cost-saving measures is traditionally what we would do when we would hire new employees, we would purchase them a new set of firefighting gear. And then, once they've reached their probationary period end, they would get another set, because we try to equip all of our firefighters with two sets of protective gear. That way, when they are encountered in a fire, they can launder that equipment, reduce the probabilities of carcinogens. Of course, while they're laundering it, they need to have another set so that they can go to another fire if it potentially exists. So what we did was I tried to cycle down, the gear's only good for ten years per NFPA. So we do five years of your frontline set and five years of your backup set, so your frontline set goes to your backup set and cycles out. So what we did was we tried to cycle gear down that's nearing the end of its life, so when it gets to eight or nine years old, I like to try to cycle it down to the new firefighters that are just being hired. In their one-year probationary period, they undergo a significant amount of training that puts a significant amount of stress on the gear. So I'd rather destroy gear that's reached the end of its life cycle and then get rid of it. Of course, that only works when you hire people that are of the same size and stature, but so far, we've been able to accomplish that. So what we're doing is cycling gear down to firefighters that are just getting hired, not necessarily getting hand-me-downs, but they're getting gear that's certainly gonna sustain them in a, in a fire. And during that one-year period, we cycle that gear through and then we dispose of it. You know, as the chief had alluded, we used to purchase this underneath the safety line. The cost of gear has significantly increased, you're looking at about thirty-five hundred dollars per set of gear now. I think when I got hired thirteen years ago, it was about, you know, a thousand, fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars for a set of gear, so we've seen a significant increase. And we're also gonna see another increase January first, so we're trying to get this order in before we see another price increase. Another cost-saving measure that we've done was we've rented gear for firefighters. There's a company in Michigan that will rent us the gear for a period of one year, it costs about a thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that has allowed us to put firefighters in gear that don't necessarily fit in gear that we have from leftovers. So we've been able to reduce the cost of having to spend thirty-five hundred dollars on a new set of gear for someone who's just coming on. So in addition to that, the, we have five battalion chiefs, and those five battalion chiefs only have one set of gear. The likelihood of a five, of a battalion chief having to enter an ideal H atmosphere, an immediately dangerous life and health atmosphere of fire, is, is lower than it is for the line personnel, so we're gonna purchase five sets of, all, all five battalion chiefs have gear that is nearing its expiration. So we're going to purchase five sets of structural firefighting gear that's, I don't wanna say cheaper, because it's not cheaper, it's a, has less features in it, so it's not as comfortable, it still has the same level of protection as far as if they were to enter a burning building, but they wouldn't be as comfortable in it as the, as the members who ride in the fire trucks every day. I'd certainly be willing to answer any questions that you have, that's just kind of. Um, I'd certainly be willing to answer any questions that you have, uh, that's just kind of a, a brief overview, um, about how we're managing our personal protective equipment.
Any questions for the lieutenant? We certainly want our people to be safe, so.
Yeah, and, and I have to say, um, you know, thank you to all of you because, uh, you know, our firefighters are in probably the, uh, darn close to the best gear you can get. Uh, there's certainly, uh, a higher level of protection that we could put them in, but the cost versus the benefit is limited. So, um, I would say that our gear is, you know, top of the line. Uh, you know, we could go a little bit higher in thermal protection, but then you, you lose durability. So we're in the, the perfect gear for durability versus, uh, protection. So we certainly thank you and appreciate your support. Thank you.
Accept the motion to approve Order twenty-two-zero-twenty-dash-seventeen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, Lieutenant. Uh, okay, old business, new old business. Approval of tw- on, I would like to accept an, uh, motion to approve the minutes for November thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Any second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Uh, liaison reports, do I have anything new on liaison reports?
The only thing I can say is ZBA-
Uh-huh.
-was talking about how much signs have been coming to them-
Uh-huh.
-and sign issues, and that they would like us to maybe review and figure out a better way to, our, fix our sign ordinance to be more accommodating as opposed to the way it is. They were talking about using, um-
Maybe be more up-to-date?
Yeah, using a different way of figuring out the size that a sign should be.
Okay.
So that, that's coming down the pike, I guess, for them.
We're, we're working on the sign ordinance, aren't we? Mm-hmm. Okay, yep, it's in the works, so it'll get to us probably pretty soon, right?
Well, I'm not sure, because I've talked to Colleen about it already, and, uh, it is gonna come up to the planning board. It's just a matter of, uh, when the planning board takes it up, so.
Well, we would like them to take it up sooner rather than later as the people who have to approve it.
Yeah.
Because the sign ordinance is antiquated. So, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, town manager report?
All set.
Assistant Town Manager.
I just have one thing, um, and I'll make it quick. And it's with regard to the drought. Believe it or not, um, as of the latest drought map, we are still, portions of the town are in either severe or extreme drought. Despite the rain we've gotten, despite the snow we've gotten, we're still at a deficit. So I just let people know that, not for the water restrictions of lawn watering, of course, but just be vigilant about your water usage in your house. Just want people to be aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anything further? I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Our next meeting is December twenty-first, twenty-twenty, and we will see you then here at the cafeteria. All those in, all those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.